May 1st, 2014. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Resika?
Here.
Mayor Quill? Here. Would you please join me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Counselor, with your permission, we have Walk on Resolution Number 85. Your permission will add that to the agenda. Very well. Clerk, if you'll add that to the agenda, please. We will start out, as always, with our public to be heard. And clerk, if you'd read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to council, rules of procedure. Prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. And all speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Very good. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please.
Kathy Barnard, 44 Logan. This is an issue of safety. A house located at 89 Osborne, it's a big brown house, it's been up for sale, it's very dilapidated. A basement, external basement access is unlocked. It's like one of those where you can go into the basement, you can go outside. But I went around the house today because the house that backs up to it at 47 Logan was torn down today due to a fire that was sustained about a year and a half ago. There's a broken window in the back. There's a house that immediately backs up to this home that has like four young children in it, so there's, I think there's a deep concern about the safety of the children in the area. And also, with 47 Logan having been demolished today, it leaves a very wide-open space with access to this home. So I think it's something that maybe should be addressed. There's a realtor's lockbox on the back door. But there's already a window that's been broken and boarded up, so it's an issue of concern for the neighbors and the children in the area.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brudy, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, your honor. Thank you. My name is Thomas Brudy, called Tim. I reside at 140 Franklin Street in Auburn, New York. And the reason people live in the city is because of the services cities provide. We don't have a well, we don't have a septic tank, and normally don't need a four-wheel-drive vehicle to get to the store. But I live on Franklin Street, so the last year, that's been a little rough. And anyway, I know the council's looking for the $398,000, so you don't go over that 5.2 or 4.8 percent tax limit. By law, you have the fiduciary responsibility to protect us as the taxpayers or the workers here. You have to make hard decisions, not popular decisions, hard decisions. For you to disguise this fee, which is a tax, by any other name other than a tax, is incorrigible. And I'm asking and imploring you not to do so. Or give the taxpayer the option to do it themselves. What I'm saying is, to disguise this with smoke and mirrors as a fee, it's a tax. Call it what it is, make the hard decisions, so we don't have to do this. Now, I don't want to get into redundancy of services or anything else. I know everyone's trying their best. What I'm asking is for honesty. And I want you all to be honest about what it is. It's a tax, and it should not go through. I'm asking you all to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brudy. Mr. Colavito?
I'm Rick Colavito, 9 North Marvin Avenue. I'm here to comment on what Mr. Brudy just said. I was the chairman of the...
Address it to the chair.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just address it to the chair.
I was the chairman of the trash committee that was created about 10 years ago. Took us two years to come up with this plan. But the problem is, and I'm here tonight, is I'm not in favor of the way the plan is being presented by the city manager. The plan was, we take, and these are approximate figures, I didn't have time to go get new ones. It's approximately 11 percent tax decrease. This is what we presented eight years ago. We take it out of the taxes and then charge approximately $10 a month at that point. It was a wash. It's a self-sustaining system. So taxes don't go up, we're just shifting money. But what we came up with was every living unit would pay. So if you have an apartment house with four apartments, instead of, is assessed for $50,000, they're going to pay four times. And a $50,000 house is only going to pay once. What this presentation by the city manager is, and again, smoking mirrors. Right now, we take in approximately $1.2 million for trash. Okay? Again, these are approximate figures. What happens is, he's going to give us $400,000 back, so that's $800,000 profit for the city, which is an 8 percent tax increase. So on top of paying for this fee of $130-something dollars a month, we're going to pay 8 percent in our taxes, more. Okay? I've done the figures, I will sit down with any of you and discuss this. This is an outrage. And on top of that, I had a meeting with the city manager two months ago about the new assessments. Okay? The assessments went up. Okay? So the tax rate is supposed to go down. And I met with Mr. Selby, and I discussed this with him, because it's a pet peeve of mine. And I said, "Tax rate approximately should go from 1305 to 1215, because the assessments went up. We equalize." He said, "I'm not going to do that." I says, "We have a history of it. Every time we reassess this city, tax rate goes down. In 2006 to '07, it went from 1324 to 916. In 2010 to '11, it went from 1157 to 808. Now it should go approximately 1305 to 1215." He's not going to do it. That's another 6 percent tax increase. So between the trash and this, it's a 14 percent tax increase that's being hidden and not, the taxpayers aren't being told. And this is how he's going to balance this budget, because that's literally $1.4 million. I'm asking you tonight, please table this about the trash. Please have a public hearing. Have everybody digest this and see the financial impact for people on fixed incomes in this city, for people who can't afford to live here anymore. That's 14 percent, and that is not even with his 1.2 percent tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Colavito. Time's up.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hutchinson?
Great to be back.
Good to have you back in chambers.
I'm here to add more gasoline to the fire, I guess. As you know, you have on your agenda tonight a resolution to create a special revenue fund for trash and refuse collection at $11.59 per month per unit. First of all, the resolution really doesn't adequately spell out what a unit is. I'm assuming it would be any apartments. If there were seven apartments in a building, it would be seven units. Single-family house would be a unit. It doesn't mention at all commercial properties. If you had a commercial property with five or six suites, would each one of those be a unit? So I think there needs to be some, an effort to look at the language and clarify that. It doesn't also address the issue of having, like, say, a dumpster on the property and having private pickup already. Are you going to charge per unit even though there's private pickup already on that property? That would significantly affect, especially some of the larger senior projects in Auburn where you have, say, 150 units. If that number, if those numbers, if those units have been plugged into your analysis, then that $11.59 might be considerably off if you didn't charge for that. This is a significant tax increase, there's no question about it. And I think Mr. Colavito said, "It is a tax increase." There's nothing, it's not about fairness, although in the resolution, there's a paragraph about fairness. It's really not about fairness, it's about the city needing more money. And I understand what you're trying to do. But if you're talking about fairness, you can't be charging $11.59 for an efficiency apartment that's in a building while you charge $11.59 for a house or a three- or four-bedroom unit that's in an apartment house. The difference in the trash generation is enormous. My efficiency apartment, one-bedroom apartment, they may maybe generate one bag or half a bag a week. A larger unit where you have a family living generates a lot more trash. So I think there has to be some adjustment there if this goes ahead and becomes a reality. I think you have a lot more work to do, and I think tabling the resolution tonight is a great idea. And if you have any questions down the road, I'm happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? No one else? Very well. We'll close that portion of our meeting. Move along the approval of meeting minutes from April 24th, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Discussion? Counselor Resika, excuse me.
Well, even though I wasn't here, the date needs to be corrected. It was not on Tuesday.
Good eyes. Passed the test.
That's all.
If you could amend, City Clerk, if you'd amended to Thursday. Very well. If you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
abstained.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Presentations and proclamations?
Yes. I don't see one. No, I don't see any of those. There is a proclamation for Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, spiritual renewal, and beautify the community. And whereas trees express the order of the nature and show us all the strength of diversity and the advantages of dependency and adapting to a changing world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper wood for our homes and fuel for our fires. And whereas 2014 is the 142nd anniversary of the holiday of Arbor Day and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, hereby proclaims Friday, May 2nd, 2014, as Arbor Day in the City of Auburn, and urges all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forest program.
Thank you. I don't believe Mr. Aitman is here to receive that, so it will be given out tomorrow night by Counselor McCormick, I believe. Thank you.
If you pass that, I'm sure...
Thank you.
Public announcements?
Yes, Mayor. We have a few tonight. First is from Senator John A. D. Francisco to the council. This is to acknowledge receipt of your April 17th, 2014 letter and a copy of Resolution Number 64 of 2014 passed by the Auburn City Council in support of the Compassionate Care Act. Thank you for providing me with this resolution. Very truly yours, John A. D. Francisco, State Senator. And from Senator Nizolio to the council. Thank you for contacting me in regard to a resolution supporting the Compassionate Care Act, which was recently passed unanimously by the Auburn City Council. As your senator, please know that I recognize the importance of this resolution and greatly appreciate you keeping me informed on the status of local initiatives in the City of Auburn. Once again, thank you for taking the time to contact me. The concerns and interests of my constituents are of the utmost importance to me, and I ask that you never hesitate to contact me if I may be of any further assistance with this or any other matter. Sincerely, Michael F. Nizolio, Senator from the 54th District. An announcement regarding this Saturday. Governor Cuomo, Senator Nizolio, Assemblyman Bob Oaks, Sheriff David Gould, County Legislature Chairman Michael Chapman, and Mayor Michael Quill invite people to participate in New York State Citizen Preparedness Training Program, which will be held at the Kyuga Anadagabosi's Campus, 1879 West Tennessee Street Road here in Auburn. It is Saturday at 10:00 a.m. People should, are encouraged to register in advance at the website wwwधprepar.ny.gov. City of Auburn Planning Board will hold its monthly meeting on Tuesday, May 6th at 6:30 p.m. The meeting will be held at Council Chambers here in City Hall, 24th South Street. The City of Auburn Human Rights Commission will hold its monthly meeting on Wednesday, May 7th at 5:00 p.m. The meeting will be held at Westminster Church, 17 William Street here in Auburn. And finally, the City of Auburn Civil Service Commission will hold its monthly meeting on Thursday, May 8th, 2014 at noon. The meeting will be held here in Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, 24th South Street.
There's a change to that. They will be meeting, I believe they're going to the third floor. Senator Nizolio will be having a hearing in regards to the heroin problem. So they will be meeting, but I believe it'll be the third floor.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Cuddy?
I'd also like to follow up with the proclamation about Arbor Day. Tomorrow, May 2nd, there's going to be a tree planting ceremony at the Seward House.
Isn't that, is that what this is for? Okay, sorry.
And, and I, also, so there's going to be a ceremony there, and then the following morning, morning at 9:00 a.m., there's going to be a tree planting throughout the City of Auburn. I know Mike Talbot and Walt Aitman are coordinating that. And I just want to say, last fall, I participated in it. It's a great event to replant trees in the City of Auburn, and I encourage everyone to, anyone to consider showing up 9:00 a.m. Bring work gloves, and please don't bring a long coat, because it'll get dirty. But anyway, I thought it was a really great event, and I encourage people to go.
Is that at the Seward as well?
That is, we're going to meet right at the gazebo across from City Hall. So...
Very good. Thank you, Counselor. City Clerk, anything else?
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. City managers report.
Just one item, Mayor. You recall, back in the spring of last year, the city council approved a agreement with Pango for a park-by-phone system. I was happy to receive a phone call earlier this week that the New York Conference of Mayors has selected that project to receive an award for innovation achievement. So I think Mayor and I will be in Saratoga Springs Sunday night to receive the award. So thanks to the council for putting that program in place. We have about 1,000 users now, and to city staff for helping to make it happen, as well as the bid, which did a lot to promote the system.
Great, that's great.
Very good. Done it?
That's it.
Thank you. Seeker Resolution Number 75 of 2014, determining that the proposed capital improvement actions are Type II actions for purposes of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. We have a sponsor. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Seeker Resolution Number 75 of 2014, whereas the city council of the City of Auburn, New York desires to undertake certain capital projects involving, one, the reconstruction and resurfacing of Walnut and South Streets and other city streets and roads, including culverts, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, and grading or improving the rights of way with a pavement which will be more durable construction than a pavement of sand and gravel, water-bound macadam, or penetration process with single-surface treatment. Two, the purchase and installation of various traffic signals, traffic signs, and traffic signal systems at various locations throughout the city. Three, the renovation and reconstruction of various city-owned buildings, whether or not including grading or improvement of the sites, original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such buildings are to be used. And four, the purchase of equipment to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city improvements, including two six-wheeled dump trucks with plow and wings, two one-ton pickup trucks with plow and salt-spreeder, and two solid waste refuse packers for the City Department of Public Works. And whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Seeker Act, and the regulations adopted pursuant heretofore by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being 6 NYCRR Part 617 as amended, the city desires to comply with the Seeker Act and the regulations with respect to the project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the city council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. The project constitutes a Type II action under 6 NYCRR Section 617.5(c)(1), 2, 4, 7, 16, and 25, and no further action under the Seeker Act and the regulations is required. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Discussion, Counsel? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Bond Ordinance Number 3 of 2014, authorizing the issuance of $5,650,000 in serial bonds to finance the cost of various transportation capital projects. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick.
Bond Ordinance Number 3 of 2014, Bond Ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $5,650,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of various transportation capital projects.
Clerk, if I could interrupt. You read this in the record last week. Could we just, at the high points again? I don't believe counsel objected to that.
Sure. Be it ordained by the council of the City of Auburn, New York as follows. The city is hereby authorized to undertake the various transportation capital projects described below. At an aggregate estimated maximum cost of $5,650,000, the estimated maximum cost of each project being as follows. Walnut Street and South Street Improvement Project, $4,843,000. Traffic Signal System, $807,000. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific objects or purposes pursuant to Paragraph 4 of Section 11a of the Local Finance Law are as follows. Walnut Street and South Street Improvement Project, 15 years of usefulness. Traffic Signal System, 20 years of usefulness. The city hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Very good. Counselor Camardo?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that out of this $5.6 million project, we'll roughly have about 2.6 reimbursed from state federal aid, correct, Doug?
Yes.
2.578. And I know these are difficult times, and it's very difficult for the city to take on any more additional debt, but these projects are, I checked them out, I feel these projects are very needed to keep our infrastructure in line, to keep the streets well-paved, and especially with the traffic signal improvements. And Walnut Street culvert improvement, it needs to be done, and especially as everybody knows, South Street needs attention and has needed attention for many, many years. And I hope with the work that's going to be done on South Street, it's not, it's work that will be done in a way that we're not going to have the same results we had 10 years ago, 15 years ago, unfortunately. But it'll make that street one of the gateways to the community. I think it'll be a great improvement. There's going to be a new water line in, and the road's going to be fixed. If I believe, the sidewalks are going to be redone, build some of the sidewalks, and most of the lighting is going to be painted also. So it's things that really need to happen. So with that, I will be supporting this resolution this evening.
Counselor Cuddy?
I just want to also follow up with Counselor Camardo. I agree with Counselor Camardo's assertion about this bond ordinance. This and the succeeding bond ordinances come to us today with years of analysis, months of planning, days of preparation, hours of work, and an approval of bond council. Between the capital and improvement plan and weeks of discussion regarding these, this and the succeeding ordinances, we as a council are thoroughly prepared to vote on these ordinances. So I intend to vote for Bond Ordinance Number 3 of 2014.
Very good. Anyone else? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Bond Ordinance Number 4 of 2014, authorizing the issuance of $1.5 million in serial bonds to finance the cost of 2014-15 road improvement program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Bond Ordinance Number 4 of 2014, of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $1,500,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of the 2014-2015 road improvement program. The City of Auburn, New York, is hereby authorized to undertake the reconstruction and resurfacing of various city streets and roads, including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, landscaping, and grading or improving the rights of way with a pavement which will be more durable construction than pavement of sand and gravel, water-bound macadam, or penetration process with single-surface treatment at an estimated maximum cost of $1,500,000, and to issue an aggregate $1,500,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned object or purpose. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 15 years pursuant to the local finance law. The council will hereby determine that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Counselor, once, before we get started, we have Marco from Engineering, and we also have Laura Comchul. At your desk, you have a spreadsheet. We talked last week briefly, if we stuck with the 1.5 million, if we bumped it to 2 million, or 2.5 million. So those are our options. So our members of staff are here. Counselor Camardo?
Yes, Mayor, I'm prepared to move forward on this. I know our streets need a lot of attention, but with that, I want a commitment from the manager that you will come back to council in the following weeks. I talked about following the code last week with excavations in the streets. And I want a commitment from the staff that the code is going to be followed and that we're going to start staying on top of these excavations, so we're not spending taxpayers' money on the streets and then unfortunately having excavations that are not properly done. And this will be just wasted money, as it sometimes has been in the past, and I don't want to see that happen again. So I'd like to make sure that if it's okay with council, that you will come back to council in a few weeks or after the budget, whatever you're, whatever you have time for, and to make sure that we have some kind of overall policy that's in place in the follow code. That second thing I'd just like to ask Bill and Mark with, I know we have, with the water replacement services in the community, we have now, I think, I don't know how many, we recognize there were old galvanized lines that go into the street for the water lines.
Yes.
Are we following this, or we're not digging up a new paved street with a water line that needs to be replaced?
Any street that we do reconstruction, we replace every galvanized line. We don't do that on every street that's just getting a mill and fill. We will investigate it. If we know of any that are leaking, then we will go follow them up.
That will be followed up, so we're not paving a street and a week later digging it up because somebody needs a new water line.
Mm-hmm. And Tom Gayback has been very good, and the city has a water leak detection program that we do every year. And we also televise the sewers on the streets that we're doing, looking to make sure that we don't have any utility problems underneath them before we pave them. So it's a combination of both.
That'll be done for all these streets identified in the programs.
Yes. Every one that we approve, yes.
Counselor McCormick?
I just wanted to reinforce what Counselor Camardo was saying about the work that's being done without city staff being made aware of it, that I wanted to ask, is it, and maybe Mr. Fusco knows the answer, when a contractor or a utility wants to do whatever they do in the road, do they go to codes, or do they go to, depending on who? I looked it up, and I got to tell you, I got two different solutions. Where would, what's the right way to go?
I think they primarily notify the engineer's office, and also they'll notify the homeowners on the street. So I just had one of those notices myself.
I was going to say, on all the larger jobs, when they're doing whole blocks or large sections, all plans are submitted from, like, say, the Gas-Electric. We review them, and then we approve them before they start the jobs. We do not, we have a, for the emergency repair work that they're constantly doing, there's just no way that they could submit them ahead of time. And so what we try to do is get an annual printout from them and then go and check the patches afterwards, which we have been short-staffed in the past, but we're following that up this year, as well as last year. We've contacted Gas-Electric. We want copies of all their work orders, so that at least every year, we'll check every patch that they put in in the previous year, and if they're deficient, then follow it up.
So, oh, sorry. So if we were to see Sam driving around, and believe me, I wouldn't know, I know more about road construction now than I ever thought in my life, I'd know. about road construction now than I ever thought in my life I'd know. But if I see someone and I think, gee, what are they doing? If I were to call your office, if you should know, and if you don't know, that means they didn't get permission or they didn't contact you.
If they're the gas and electric and it's emergency repair.
Right.
We won't know about it ahead of time. But if it's like East Tennessee Street where you see a whole crew and a one up there, we definitely know about it because we've approved it.
But if my neighbor starts to have a road dug up.
Well, then he has to, they'll either get a plumbing permit and the code enforcement will know about it, or they'll have gotten an excavation permit from us.
So as a citizen, I could call codes or your office and say, does Tree Main Street, are you aware of this? And if you aren't, then you'll take action.
That's correct. Yes, Counselor.
Bill, I mentioned this last time, they have to go and file with the DigSafe New York. All the utilities have to be laid out.
That's right, and we've kind of.
So there's a bunch of checks and balances here that should happen.
That's correct. And with your suggestion last time, we had a conversation with Superintendent Mike Talbot and because the city is a utility provider, we do get notified on all the Dig safely New Yorker and he's going to give us a copy of those so we can follow up on those as well.
Excellent.
Okay.
Counselor Camardo?
Just one thing, Bill. The code states that if the office is closed, it's up to the contractor to come to City Hall the next business day and fill out an application for an excavation. And also it states that if it's a franchise of the city, like the gas and electric or any utility company, they're supposed to have a bond on file with the city. So it specifically states that in the code, those are the things we need to follow, is the code. That's the laws of the city.
Right. And the bonding is to make sure that if somebody doesn't do the work, then financially you can go after the bond. But we have not found that ever necessary with, you know, the New York State Electric and Gas who's doing the excavations because they always, when they're notified of a deficient patch, they go out and fix it. So I mean, it's an undue cost to the rate players. If we ever have a problem with them, then I would insist that we have a bond. But when we have a utility company that's working, you know, in the city every single day and has a track record of 100% of following up on a bid patches, we have not required the bonding from them. But we should probably think about, do we need to have it for some of the plumbers if they're not doing the patches afterwards?
That's what it states in the code and we need to follow the code, Bill. That's what it's there for.
It says that we can require bonding, yes.
One, I'm total, go ahead, Counselor, please.
Well, you can follow through, sir.
I'm in total agreement. We've lost control of all of our patching on the road work. Mr. Salby, I'd like you to work with Mr. Lupien and Mr. Talbot to begin with. Maybe it's time that the city took on the repairing of these patches at a cost. For example, so many cubic feet and so many man-hours or people-hours, however we want to do it, and take a look at it. It may be protecting ourselves in the long run. So if ABC Plumber digs up Lansing Street, they notify us, we, when all the repairs are made, we do the backfill and we do the patching and then we know what the product is. So I don't know how feasible it is, but I'd like the staff to look into it to see if it's at all possible. So, Mr. Cuddy, Counselor Cuddy?
We had already mentioned that last week, Marco Ojrowski presented a wish list for the 2014-15 Road Program. And we saw that over the years, doing the bare minimum has basically left our roads the way they are now. The newly coveted pothole killer 2000 will help out, but it will not take the place of solid structural repair. I agree with last week's assertion by Counselor Camardo that the city needs to be vigilant in making sure private excavators go through the strict permitting process before they dig up our roads. If they break the code, fines should be given, especially since we are witnessing and anticipating a high frequency of excavations during the citywide water meter upgrade. Regardless, the questionable follow-through of our current excavation code enforcement is not a valid reason to throw away our road program altogether. In fact, I am proposing that we may increase the amount of the bond ordinance for Bond Ordinance Number Four of 2014 so that we do not continue to fall behind in our road infrastructure efforts like we have in the past. So in front of us, we have actually a few pages. One is the suggested streets if we bond for 1.5 million and then the additional streets for 2 million and the additional streets for 2.5 million. And the wish list is 2.5 million. And I know Counselor Camardo's concerns about debt are valid. And so I don't know if we can afford to go for the 2.5 million at this point, especially given the debt spreadsheet provided to us by our comptroller. But I am interested in amending the current Bond Ordinance Number Four to 2 million so that we can, so that we can maybe make some headway on our roads and try to, you know, be on top of it and again, listen to our staff so that they can better serve us and the public in paving our roads. So I ask that we put on the table that we amend Bond Ordinance Number Four to 2 million dollars?
Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to amend Bond Ordinance Number Four to the amount of 2 million dollars. Do we have a second?
For the sake of getting it out on the table and discussing it, I would second it.
Very good. Would you call the roll in regards to the amendment?
We can discuss, we don't have to do that, so, okay, I'm catching myself.
So, Counsel, it's up to you now.
I was just thinking if Lauren could give us what that impact is for another 500,000.
Hello, I provided the schedules for you via email. Hopefully you received them. For a 2 million dollar project, obviously we'd have the additional 500,000 dollars worth of principal. We do also have to consider that we'll have approximately an additional 110,000 dollars worth of interest. Our annual payment will increase for next fiscal year to approximately, by approximately 6,000. And then on average, between 35 to 40,000 subsequently through 2029.
So that, we take that information away against not doing those roads? And I don't know if we can predict what that cost is either. But these are the ones that are failed? I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Failed, the rating of failed is, Mark, would you mind, I'm sorry, your ranking, would you tell us what failed was again, even though it sounds bad and I should know?
Failed is pretty bad. I mean, it's basically, most of them were gravel, the, like I might have mentioned, you know, two to three inches of, it's not just a puddle, it's like a large stretch where it's pretty rough on your car. Where, I mean, you're definitely going to notice that, and you're probably going to get angry from driving on it. So it's pretty, it's pretty poor condition. Where if you let it go another season through the winter, you're going to have major problems.
What's lower, what's the failed, is there another level? A worse level?
I did failed, poor, fair, and good.
Okay, so failed's it?
Failed is the.
Failed's the absolute worst.
Okay.
And at 1.5, you're going to get 14 of these failed streets. 2 million, you're going to get 24. And if you go to 2.5, you're up to 38, which 38 would take care of about 99% of the failed streets. So you're, you still got quite a few failed streets at the 2 million dollar level. And there's a map I created, different color codes. Like I said, the 1.5 is the red colors. The 2 million is the red plus the blue. And the 2.5 is the green plus the red and the blue. So that's, it kind of gives you an idea visually of how much more you're doing considering the size of the city.
And this is work that would be done this summer?
Right.
Right. And the cost of the material goes up and I'm just trying to make it right in my own mind that sooner.
It's trending upwards, yeah. It varies by the season. Right now, it's high. It'll drop usually in June and then it may increase, you know, midsummer depending on demand.
Okay, thank you.
It's tied to the petroleum costs as well.
Correct. Counselor Camardo?
Just a couple of comments. I've traveled all the roads that you pointed out and unfortunately, they're all in rough shape and we need to spend some money on them. So I'm confident if we can get the excavations taken care of and fix some of these streets that you have outlined, we should put the city back in at least some good shape and try to start to put it off in good shape. But the second thing I wanted to talk to you gentlemen about, if we talk about the excavations, which the code reads that the city shall be responsible for, the pavement in the street, is it possible that when we do go out for bid this year, whether it be Vitale, Rizzo, whoever wins the contract, can bid on the excavations of per square foot so that we could have them do the, fix some of these excavations in the streets that may be coming up by contractors and they would pay that bid amount that's bid for every project that's out there, you know, per square foot?
We have patch prices in every contract because we have to do the patches on the streets in the road program. So we already request for those prices.
If it's our responsibility to fix the excavations in the street and then the contractor pays the city, could we have the contractor, Vitale, Rizzo, whoever gets the road program do this work?
I think it would be better off to separate it, maybe put it out to bid as a service contract.
Okay, all right. Just a thought.
Otherwise, your road program, it gets too hard to control.
So that would be good for a year, correct?
Or a year or extend it by a year, or we can just use the county bid pricing.
Just a thought so we can help out with that. I would support the 2 million dollars because I think our roads need to be fixed. I'm getting calls constantly from individuals who, you know, are traveling the roads every day, they're in rough shape. It's something that needs to be done. So I would support that. Additional monies, unfortunately, like I said, it's very difficult in these times, but we need to keep up on our infrastructure here.
And I just want to mention that the list you have is a, it's a working list. I mean, the estimate is based on historic square yard costs that I've kept track of. So it's, once I get your bonding level, whether it be 2 million, we'll go back down, we'll reprioritize this list and we'll do an actual takeoff, you know, to get a true cost. And then we might be able to add some more streets. So this isn't a final list by no means.
Both of you gentlemen, and Laura, I have one for you too also, but when we send this out to bids, and it sounds like we're almost at 2 million dollars, I'm going to guess, I don't know that yet. But is there a way that we can do a, some type of a bid and see what the entire package would come out to? In other words, if you.
We could do an alternate.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm looking for, I believe, Billy. So maybe we can't get all 38 streets as Mark described, but maybe with 2 million dollars, we may get up to 30, 31 or something like that with, if we get our contractors to sharpen their pencil, trying to get the best bang for it.
Let me see if I understand you.
Sure.
Did you want to get us to put in the full 38 streets for the 2.5 million and the difference between 2 million and 2.5 million as an alternate to see what that, what the prices would be? Is that what you're shooting for?
I'd like to see that. I'd like to see how sharp their pencil would be if we went from, if we give them X number of streets and then not.
We can do that, yes.
Okay, all right. Laura, one second, Counselor. Laura, in my, the way I ciphered this out, and I know that's not a correct term, but if we went from 2, or 1.5 million to 2 million, there is a 500,000 dollars extra that we're borrowing, I understand that, but the cost would be approximately 100,000 dollars in interest?
About 110, yeah.
So actually, it's going to be 600,000 dollars approximately when it's all said and done, so.
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Resika?
Yeah, I too agree. We got to be cautious here. We can't, I mean, with our debt load here, I mean, it's right here. I have to say, given the condition of the streets, I have to support the 2 million. Again, I like the policy that, let's see if we can't get the biggest bang for our buck. Perhaps if Mark and company were able to get the contracts as a sharpener pencils, we may be able to squeak in a couple more, or it may even go the other way. We don't know yet. But we have to go a little bit further, I think, than the 1.5, just given the rigidity of our streets. This is probably the biggest and most vocal source of complaints by virtually everyone in the city. So I will support a 2 million bond increase on this, or two, I should say, two 2 millions.
Billy and Mark, the only, the last thing I want to add in is when we come down to the final list of streets, if it's not all of them, will you do your best to distribute it throughout the city? I myself and I'm sure other members of council say, it's always in the east end or it's always in the west end. I want to do everything we can. The west end, it seems to have more of the streets than any.
This year, this year and probably last year, we ended up putting a few more streets in the west end because they've just been in worse shape. A few years ago, we probably favored the east end a little bit more. It seems like the south end holds up a little bit better than the north end. Till this year, right. So, you know, it kind of, but we can balance it. We try to do that.
Yeah, we actually, that's all I asked.
Because a lot of times, there's 10 streets we'd like to do and we got money for two, so it's not a hard problem kind of balancing the list a little bit.
I have one real quick question on the prioritizing of which ones get done first. What's the selection for that? I mean, I'm sure everybody would immediately like their street done as quick as possible.
Again, to get the biggest bang for our buck, we give the contractor a start date and an end date and we allow him to do his own methods and.
So he has autonomy.
His own thing. So he tends to go geographically, mills in an area, then fixes the streets in that area, then goes to another area because then that's the most efficient for him. And then that keeps his price down and gets us to do an extra block or two because of we letting him have that ability to do whatever streets on the list in whatever order he can do the most efficient way.
So it's based on his deployment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. So we have a vote to amend the Bond Ordinance Number Four from 1.5 million to 2 million dollars. We have a motion by Counselor Cuddy and seconded by Counselor McCormick. So we will call for the amendment first, a vote on the amendment. If you call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye, Carrie.
Further discussion, Counsel? Remind you, bond ordinances will carry, will require a majority vote, so if you call the roll in regards to Bond Ordinance Number Four, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye, Carrie.
Meant to say a supermajority, thank you.
Bond Ordinance Number Five of 2014 authorizing the issuance of 790,000 dollars in serial bonds to finance the cost of the purchase of equipment for maintaining city improvements. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Resika, seconded by Counselor McCormick.
Bond Ordinance Number Five of 2014, City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the purchase of equipment to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing, or maintaining city improvements, the cost of which is 30,000 dollars or more, including two six-wheel dump trucks with plow and wings, two one-ton pickup trucks with plow and salt spreader, and two solid waste refuse packers for the City Department of Public Works, all at an estimated maximum cost of 790,000 dollars, and to issue an aggregate 790,000 dollars in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 15 years pursuant to local finance law. The council hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance, and this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Counsel? Counselor Camardo?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, unfortunately, these are things that the city needs, especially to keep the streets clean from the snow plowing and to pick up the garbage. I think I got a couple of questions from Mike Talbot who's here tonight. Mike, you and the manager talked, or we talked a couple of councils last year about buying this equipment and keeping it for a year or two and turning it around so that our fleets kept up. We try to, because a lot of, we're buying in the state bid and it's a very lucrative program for. a lot of, we're buying in the state bid and it's a very lucrative program for the city to do that. And a lot of communities are going in the direction now of buying equipment, using it for two years and then selling it and recouping a great deal of their costs back for the equipment, not only to keep it new, but to keep not a lot of money that weren't being indebtedness to keep paying for. So if you could talk about that for a minute, or what our program's going to be, or how it's going to move forward, it's...
Well, that is one of our goals, but unfortunately, we're not at that point yet because of, you know, thankfully for the, or thanks to the council, we just got two new 10-wheelers last year. They actually came at the end of the winter. So what we're trying to do is get us back up to where we can enter into a program like that. Because if we were to enter in a program like that now and use our newer vehicles for two or three years, all of a sudden, we would only have that number of newer vehicles because all our vehicles are so old. So, once we get up there, I think if we can push this, this round of, you know, re-updating our fleet, I think we'll be that much closer to doing exactly what you're describing. Because, you know, in concert with this is also in our operating budget for the upcoming budget is some decreases in our vehicle maintenance and repairs.
I see that. You see, and here it's about $30,000 savings a year.
Right. So, you know, it's critical, it's, you know, it's kind of sad sometimes to walk out in the garage and see so many trucks at different times in different states of repair, but that's, the status of our fleet is old. And it's tired and the trucks that are replacing, we're not, they don't stick around or they go right to the auction block. So, you know, this is much needed. Literally, it's what makes us go. You know, it makes us push snow, it makes us melt snow and ice, it picks up logs, it picks up brush. It does everything for us.
Counselor Resika?
Yes, and Mike, on your, on your fleet refresh, one of the other options that I believe was kicked around was the potential of a lease. Has that been reexamined or has that proven to be a not, non-beneficial program?
Well, when we did the analysis last year, it was still cheaper to bond for it than it was to lease.
Okay.
Because of some graduated percentages as you get into the lease.
So there's, nothing's changed from last year? Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Counselor Cuddy?
For Bond Ordinance Number Five, six vehicles that are over 10 years old. And we know during the last snowstorm, three of the trucks were down. Was it three or four? I mean...
Depends on what storm.
The last big one. And we know, like this past one, we can't afford not to invest in new trucks to help keep our roads clear. And then these, the two garbage trucks or refuse pack, refuse packers are being purchased to replace ones that are 13 years old. So I'm going to support Bond Ordinance Number Five as well.
Clerk, if you called the roll, please, in regards to Bond Ordinance Number Five?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Bond Ordinance Number Six of 2014 authorizing the issuance of $785,000 in serial bonds to finance the cost of building improvements in and for the city. Who has, Counselor Resika?
Second. Counselor Cuddy?
Bond Ordinance Number Six of 2014, City of Auburn, New York is hereby authorized to undertake the renovation and reconstruction of various city-owned buildings, whether or not including grading or improvement of the sites, original furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required for the purposes for which such buildings are to be used at an estimated maximum cost of $785,000, and to issue an aggregate $785,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law. It is hereby determined that the period of probable usefulness of the aforementioned specific object or purpose is 25 years pursuant to the local finance law. Counsel hereby determines that the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations thereunder have previously been satisfied with respect to the expenditures authorized by this ordinance, and this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Counselor Resika?
Yes, I need to ask a question. Is this building under any historic preservation requirements?
Let me ask Christina Selvick to respond.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To answer that question is yes. So this building is a contributing feature within our South Street, Grover Street National Historic District.
Okay. The reason I ask is because we have somewhat of a issue at the, at the police station where windows have to be replaced and they fall into the historical preservation guidelines, yet the fire department side was replaced with more modern vinyl windows and I guess it's a bit, a, bit of a sticky wicket there because allegedly the Historic Preservation Committee wasn't aware that the windows were going to be upgraded and now, like I say, it's a tug of war on the windows. So I'm just a little bit concerned that if we're going to be under these historic guidelines that, you know, we maintain exactly the historic character as needed under these guidelines, but I see the problem down at the, at the police station there is, it's, you know, causing some, I'm going to call budgetary issues.
I'm happy to talk to you about the police station and fire station issue after the meeting.
Sure.
In terms of City Hall, if we're making in-kind replacement or maintenance such as painting, repairing the slate roof is in-kind, then we're fine. If we're proposing to change materials or anything within our public entryways and access, that's when we would want to bring that to our city historic resources.
So the treasurer's department service window improvements involve what?
That, that is not in the public area. That will actually be in the employee area where their service counter is. If you're not familiar with it, it is incredibly inadequate. There's actually pieces of the counter. It's catching people's garments. So it's time to actually get that updated to accommodate modern computer access terminals where before there were, you know, card catalogs and those type of...
Sure.
Facilities.
And as far as the elevator goes, I did look at the, the control system for that and I'm surprised that that's still working, as old as that is.
Doesn't every day, counsel.
I understand that. That's why there's a can of contact cleaner in the cabinet. And I think they even have some files and sandpaper in there to clean them. So I can, definitely we need to have this elevator in place for the accessibility of the building. So, and of course, bathroom improvements and plumbing repairs speak for themselves. This is, this is sorely needed. I mean, this is, this is the building that's the face of the community in the city. This is the go-to place, so we have no, no real choice. We cannot let this, you know, run down and fall into a disrepair. It would only reflect badly on anyone visiting our city. So I would be supportive of this.
Counselor McCormick?
I just want to reinforce, it's not cosmetic and feel-good kind of repairs. I, I think the fire department has visited City Hall, well, once would be more than enough, but regarding the elevator, the motor overheats and does its own little burning thing. And then the other thing is it does decide to quit on days like Election Day, and it really inhibits the people of the city's ability to access the first floor. It is the only handicap access to the first, the rest of the floors besides the basement. In addition, the roof isn't just to get it, a nice new roof, there's actually leaks in the roof and that's where the city keeps their records. So it's, these are all way overdue. I think there's, we've been catching drips in the attic for about five years. So this is overdue and I wholeheartedly behind it.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
I agree with Counselor McCormick and Counselor Resika that these repairs are overdue. I also like Counselor Resika's, you know, statement that, that City Hall is the face of the city and I couldn't agree more. And I think we need, it needs attention and this bond ordinance does pay attention to, to, to that.
Christina, in regards to elevator, was that going to be handicap accessible? Am I correct or are we retrofitting what is there?
The elevator is what keeps this building currently ADA compliant. So we will need to make sure that that's operating in those requirements. We're not sure at this point if it's a brand-new replacement or if we're able to salvage parts of it, but what I'm hearing is we're going to need a new one. So I'm hoping what has been provided as an estimate gets us to where we need to be. So elevators unfortunately are extremely expensive components of, of building operations.
I understand the elevator is not a current standard size, so it requires some custom fabrication. And the motor problems are basically due to the relays hanging up.
Right. And there's really only two companies that deal with elevators, Otis and its competitors. So we're going to have to really take a look at that in terms of what they can provide for us in a historic retrofit setting.
And by the way, that, that equipment would have some salvage value just for the copper. That, that motor is a heavy-wound copper-wired open frame motor. That definitely has a significant salvage value, just for the copper.
Understood.
Counselor?
I got a question for Mike Talbot. Mike, if you can back up, could you explain to us the $85,000 for the fence around Public Works?
Yeah, currently we have no security down there at all. There's no enclosure. You know, we're bound on the east by a small creek and farmland to the south, Bluefield Road right there to the west and Genesee Street. And we have no, well, we really have no means to control access.
Are you having problems down there with...
Well, we have, yeah. You know, like, like, like at any of the parks, it goes in cycles. You know?
It's a lot of money, $85,000 for a fence, unfortunately, but...
Well...
If you're facing problems, I can understand it, but...
You know, we've had, we've had problems with people entering the building before, you know, looking for things to take. And what they're doing is coming off some of the side roads or coming through the field. Of course, if someone's going to climb a fence, they're going to climb a fence also, but it's at least that it may keep, you know, the honest crook out, so.
Now, I, what happened with, I thought you were going to spend some money on trying to enclose one of the buildings for, to get the equipment inside to get it warm. What happened?
Yeah, we looked at that. We have an existing steel-beamed framework there and unfortunately, it's just not wide enough. And the costs to do it were, Christina, what we, it was like $400,000. So obviously, we scrapped that. So, you know, we're looking at a couple other options. Unfortunately, with money the way it is, we're just going to have to be, just be more resourceful this coming year and try to figure something out.
Now, what are you doing with the, it's the vac truck that needs to be inside every night?
Yeah.
Do you have any plans for that?
Well, you know, I think we have some money in the operating budget for next year to look to lease space to park it during the winter. It used to have its home down there at the sewage treatment plant. But, you know, that was transferred, possession of that building was transferred over to the police department. So in the winter now, that's stored down at our place and unfortunately, it's such a big machine, you know, takes up, you know, a good bit of the inside. You've seen it in there before. So it really jams things up and unfortunately, you can't bring it outside for very long. So, you know, it really hamstrings us. We've, you know, the guys have been resourceful and, and we do the best we can, but, you know, there are just some, some improvements that need to be done. I don't think we've really ever sunk a dime into that building since the city bought it in the late 90s.
So you're going to put gate, there's going to, it's going to be gated, the facility?
Well, we're going to obviously do the most least expensive, we think. What we want to start with is the frontage on Genesee Street. Because that's, you know...
And it's going to be gated? Is that what you're...
That's what we, you know, we'll look at a couple of different methods to, to do it, but what we envision is something similar to what's down the landfill, simple gate, nothing electronic or high-tech like that, but just a gate, you know, for security.
So how much of the perimeter are you going to fill in? I mean...
Well, that's what we're trying, we're seeing how much we can stretch.
Because if you, if you got people entering from the, from the field to the, to the south, I mean, that's an open area. I mean, I, I know that area well. In fact, I used to work at that building when it was the Ferman Chevrolet. So I'm very familiar with the location.
So you know some of the, some of the issues we...
Absolutely.
But we felt, and, you know, we can rethink it also, we felt that the Genesee Street probably was the most critical. Because if anyone was to try to do any damage or try to remove something large, that's the way they'd come in and out.
They're going to come out Genesee Street and not go out through Bluefield?
Well, there's a big ditch there.
Yeah, but they're going to get it out.
Well...
Get the field right behind there.
Spending this $85,000, are we, should we be doing something different or...
Sure, we'll look at any, I mean, that's, I mean, yes, what we were going to do and that's the first thought was Genesee Street, but like I, like I said, that's open for discussion. We can, we'll look at all. I mean, that's just to get us started. That, we realize that's probably not going to do the entire perimeter.
Chain link fence, correct.
Yeah.
I can recall back in the, in the, in the 70s or whatever, any, any thefts from that dealership were, that were investigated and were talked about that we all knew about came right from Bluefield and also from that field. In fact, you know, they had been caught, people had been caught out there with this stuff. At one point in time, even some of the employees at the dealership walked out there and found a cache of tires that were stacked up that somebody had, had taken off and stacked up ready for, for, you know, retrieval later. Obviously, when they got back there, they were gone, but I mean, it was more accessible from the south from that field. That field is very easily traversed by a four-wheel drive vehicle in, in, in most weathers or, and when it's dry, any vehicle. It's, it's fairly smooth. I really think that the best bang for the buck, obviously, you got the visibility on Genesee Street and the, the main entrance there, but I really feel that probably the worst, I'm going to say hazard or the worst, not hazard, but worst risk is probably to the south.
You're probably right now that, now that we talk about it, because probably our best security system is McDonald's. You know, because if you're sitting in the drive-thru waiting for your coffee or something, you're, you have to stare right at our building, so.
Is there any, is there any security cameras on site?
No.
Well, there's another potential uses. You could just simply put a, a camera up there that takes different angles of the, of the yard as it intervals and, and of course, records it. So, I mean, these are other steps over and above some fencing. Obviously, the, as you point out, a fence is only a slight deterrent for some people.
Right. But, you know, what we wanted to do was just start the process.
Understood.
And, and point us in that direction.
And I think, Counselor, we would consult with the police department regarding what we think is going to be the best thing to deter trespassing and crime.
Like I say, as, you know, in the early 70s, as an employee down the dealership, that was the, the, the path of, of carryout. It was the south.
So are you going to, are you going to change the wording on here and say it's for security or not fencing? Or how are you going to, are you just going to leave it for fencing for the $85,000? Should it be changed for security purposes in case you do something different? Because... What does the bond ordinance say, Christina? Do you remember?
Oh, it's right here.
Let's see.
So was the question to change the wording in the bond ordinance from...
Should maybe fence the security measures?
I just want to talk to the comptroller because I'm not confident that we can bond for security equipment if that's an eligible capital expense. So bonding's only supposed to be for capital items and not something that we could manage as part of our general O and M budget. So, if you can give me just one second.
It doesn't really say specifically in it. It just says equipment and furnishings and machinery.
Mm-hmm.
So it might be safe.
Doesn't say specifically in the, in the bond ordinance, anything?
No, it just says equipment, furnishings, machinery, apparatus. It doesn't really say fencing specifically. So apparatus could be a camera.
That would be, and it would be affixed to the building, obviously.
Right. Under that finance law, there's actually a list of items that Laura and I use to help guide our bond council when we're doing the bond ordinances. So we have to actually justify to them the reason why we're even suggesting doing a bond ordinance. And then they verify whether or not that's an eligible item for us to bond for. So I just want to make sure that security improvements of that sort are an eligible item before we would pass the ordinance.
Which fence really is, anyway?
Fence, fencing's an eligible capital item, so, yes.
Yeah, so.
But if we're looking at cameras... But if we're looking at cameras...
Well, we can take a minute and make sure we do it right.
Laura is getting the list at the moment. I mean, we, I believe we have done it with previous projects. I just wanna make sure.
But we, while she's looking, we don't need to amend the bond ordinance, it looks like.
No, it's all about the scope of work, so...
Right, so the bond ordinance is not...
Stand, yeah.
It wouldn't need to be amended.
I think the question is whether this bond ordinance is issued in its current form, whether we could properly spend the money for a...
Yes, right.
A non-capital, non-fence item.
You don't have to amend the ordinance, but the purpose and the scope of work for which you passed it for.
So, we'd have to send it back?
Well, we wouldn't be able to spend that portion of the money.
Okay.
You mean, well, but if, that's only if it was out of scope. If we found that that was out of scope, and just, we would just change the scope back to the fence, correct?
Right, that's exactly what we could do.
Okay.
So, we could move forward.
Let's give Laura a couple minutes, see if she comes back.
Mike, could there be, Mike, could there be fencing, like contingent to the buildings and certain areas too? I mean, to, you see what I'm saying, instead of the whole perimeter, some areas that, like, you know, here's the edge of the built perimeter?
Yeah, that's what we're just talking about back there, and in agreement with Counselor Rosika, probably, you know, thinking about it a little more, probably along the back end of that field is probably the right thing to do, 'cause if you remember on Genesee Street, there's a guardrail there and there's a elevation, there's a kind of a drop there as it comes into the property, so that's...
Plus, it is well-lit there.
Yeah, right.
But in the backyard...
Right.
And isn't there fencing going in front of the solid building there, Mike, along Genesee Street? Isn't there fencing going along the solid building at Genesee?
Are, I mean, the fencing? Well, we really haven't gotten that far yet on where we're gonna put the fence.
No, I'm saying there is now, isn't there?
There's a guardrail.
Guardrail?
There's a guardrail from the entrance to the east, going back to that, going towards tops.
Going towards the river there, the alley.
Right, yeah. But, yeah, it probably would make more sense to put it, you know, adjacent to the farm field.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause then you'd have the creek to the east, you'd have the guardrail to the northeast...
And the ditch to the west.
And the ditch, yeah. And then all our broken-down equipment on the west side on Bluefield Road.
Well, there's your fence.
Yeah.
There's your fence.
You're entitled to sing, if you like.
Oh, you don't want that.
Do the Jeopardy theme.
The Jeopardy.
Do Jeopardy.
We don't see the security cameras specifically listed, so we'd like to check with bond counsel, but we have done that previously. I was reminded, we've done security improvements with the parking garage project that we did, which was bonded for, as well as the City Hall Centennial improvements. So, we have some history of doing those type of improvements with bond ordinances previously.
Okay, that's, well, like I say, I really think that, you know, given the, I'm gonna say, the biggest effect I would think is, would be a camera.
Why don't we bring back a proposal to the council when we get to the point of, and then we can present that to you and show you what might be fencing, what might be cameras?
Or a combination of.
Yeah.
Counselor Kamara, you raised the issue, I believe. Are you good?
Sure, fine, lungs were spending the money, and it's appropriately spent. I have no problem with it.
Are you, are you understanding the same thing we are? Okay, Christina and Laura both, okay. Further discussion, counsel? You call the roll in regards to bond ordinance number six of 2014, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Aye. There you go. Thank you, everyone. Land sale resolution number 76 of 2014, authorizing the sale of property at 116 Osborne Street. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kamardo, seconded by Counselor Rosika.
Land sale resolution number 76 of 2013, whereas the City of Auburn acquired title to a parcel of land situated at 116 Osborne Street pursuant to a tax foreclosure on July 31, 2013, and whereas the premises is commonly known as 116 Osborne Street, Auburn, New York, and is vacant land not suitable as a building lot, and whereas parties expressed interest in purchasing the premises, and pursuant to city policy, those parties so interested were informed that they should submit an offer to purchase to the Corporation Council's office on or before April 10, 2014, and two sealed bids were received, and the highest bidder was John J. Voorhees, who offered to purchase the premises for the sum of $2,500. And whereas the property has been determined to be no longer needed for municipal purposes, and the amount that has been offered for purchase is fair and adequate consideration due to the location and configuration of the premises, and whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council accept the offer submitted by John Voorhees in the amount of $2,500 to purchase the premises at 116 Osborne Street, and that the property has been determined to be no longer needed for municipal purposes and is surplus property, and that the amount paid is determined to be fair and adequate consideration. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does determine that the premises at 116 Osborne Street to be no longer needed for municipal purposes and is surplus property, and the amount to be paid in the sum of $2,500 is fair and adequate consideration. Be it further resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to sign any and all documents in order to convey said premises to John Voorhees, 119 Osborne Street, Auburn, New York.
Discussion, counsel? Once again, this is a property transfer, and I believe I'm correct, Mr. Fusco's a supermajority, due to four votes for it, so... Clerk, have you called the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Agreement resolution number 77 of 2014, authorizing the mayor entering an agreement for the state, excuse me, for the sale of 264 Genesee Street, Auburn, New York. We have a sponsor, Counselor Rosika, seconded by Counselor Kamardo.
Agreement resolution number 77 of 2014, whereas premises at 264 Genesee Street, Auburn, New York, was formerly a tavern and a restaurant, and the premises has been abandoned by the owner and was the subject of a mortgage foreclosure proceeding, which was not completed, and the lender in question did not obtain title to the premises. And whereas there are currently unpaid taxes and assessments against the property in the amount of $123,738.20, and the property value is less than the amount which is due for the delinquent taxes, and whereas the city has been contacted by Steve Tartabone, who is desirous of obtaining title to the premises, and he has offered the sum of $20,000 to obtain ownership of the premises after the city has completed its tax foreclosure proceeding and is able to legally convey title. The prospective buyer, Steve Tartabone, will be required to deposit the sum of $20,000 non-refundable, guaranteeing that he will finalize the purchase of the property when all legal measures have been completed. And whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for the acceptance of a $20,000 deposit to purchase the premises at 264 Genesee Street, Auburn, New York, upon completion of its tax foreclosure proceedings, and is able to transfer title to the premises to Steve Tartabone. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Steve Tartabone for the acceptance of a deposit in the amount of $20,000 to purchase premises at 264 Genesee Street, Auburn, New York, at such time when the city has obtained legal title to the premises, and that all the terms and conditions of the agreement remain in full force and effect, and the city council shall thereafter authorize by resolution a land transfer of title to the premises.
Discussion. Counselor Rosika?
This is definitely an opportunity to turn a property that's not only an eyesore, but a, subject to getting it back on the tax rolls, and this looks like probably the best opportunity of getting it back on the tax rolls and being an active property once again, so I will support this.
Very good. Clerk, have you called the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Appointment resolution number 78 of 2014, reappointing a member of the Civil Service Commission. We have a sponsor, Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Appointment resolution number 78 of 2014, whereas on May 22, 2008, John C. Hardy of 72 Chapman Avenue, Auburn, New York, was appointed as a Civil Service Commissioner by the City of Auburn for a term of six years, said term expiring on May 31, 2014, and whereas the Auburn City Council wishes to reappoint Mr. Hardy to another term as Civil Service Commissioner. Now, therefore, be it resolved that John C. Hardy of 72 Chapman Avenue, Auburn, New York, is hereby reappointed as a Civil Service Commissioner of the City of Auburn effective June 1, 2014, for a term of six years terminating on May 31, 2020. Wow.
Counselor McCormick?
That sounds like a long time.
It does.
I just wanted to thank Jack Hardy for the six years that he has served on the civil service. They, the civil service department's gone through a few changes, lost staff, reduced, rearranged, and I'm happy that you want to do it another six years. So, thank you for your service to the city.
Counselor Kamardo?
I worked with Jack for many years in the Civil Service Commission. Jack, thank you for your service to the community. You're a hard-working individual and bring a lot to the commission, so thank you for continuing your work in that area.
Mr. Hardy, I always knew you as Jack. I'm kinda confused here when it come up John. I'm looking around, what am I missing here? So, must be your evil twin, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, very good. Clerk, have you called the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Change order resolution number 79 of 2014, authorizing change order number one for additional engineering services for the Franklin Street Water Main Project. We have a sponsor, Counselor Rosika, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Change order resolution number 79 of 2014, whereas Erdman Anthony has previously been retained to provide engineering and design services and construction inspection services for the Franklin Street Water Main Project, and whereas the Auburn City Council has approved a change order to Rizzo Construction for additional work to be done on the project, and it is necessary for additional engineering and design services in the amount of $13,000 and $18,000 for additional construction inspection services for a total of $31,000 to be provided by Erdman Anthony, and whereas change order number one will award Erdman Anthony the total sum of $31,000 for the additional engineering and design services and the construction inspection services for the project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve change order number one to compensate Erdman Anthony for additional engineering and design services in the amount of $13,000, and for additional construction inspection services in the amount of $18,000, for a total change order amount of $31,000. Be it further resolved, the cost of the change order in the amount of $31,000 shall be allocated to account number HA 5110-440-GG in the amount of $25,364.20 and the sum of $5,635.80 to be charged to account number HA 5110-440-GR.
Thank you. Discussion, counsel? Clerk, have you called the roll then, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Council resolution number 80 of 2014, requesting federal and state representative support for city capital projects and grant program project. We have a sponsor, Counselor Kamardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick.
Council resolution, requesting federal and state representative support for city capital projects and grant programs, whereas the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, undertakes an annual capital improvement plan and participates in grant programs that assist with the planning and financing of construction, major repair and replacement of capital items related to city roadways and waterways, buildings, parks, landfill, utility systems, and fleet vehicles, and whereas the city is in the process of planning for key capital improvements for the upcoming 2014-2015 fiscal year, and is requesting federal and state representative support for the following projects as they relate to these city functional areas. One, government facilities, feasibility studies and design funding for a new regional public safety center and a city-county regional public works facility. Two, municipal utilities, replacement of the South Street water line, rehabilitation of the North Division Street hydro facility and dam, and the implementation of a pilot vermicomposting facility. Three, parks and recreation improvements at the Regional Recreation Complex at Casey Park. Four, public safety, acquisition of replacement fire department apparatus and police department emergency response team equipment. Five, solid waste feasibility and planning study for the Auburn landfill and refuse collection program. Six, transportation and pedestrian initiatives, the Owasco River Greenway Trail design and construction of right-of-way improvements along South Street. Seven, fleet vehicles, acquisition of replacement city fleet vehicles for the continued maintenance of city streets, facilities, and parks. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the members of the City Council of the City of Auburn, as follows, that the City of Auburn has identified key capital improvements that may be eligible for federal and New York State funding assistance, that the mayor, members of the City Council, and city staff may utilize this project information to assist in discussion with federal and New York State representatives. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Counselor Kamardo?
Mayor, we spent a lot of money this evening on projects that needed to be done in the community, and I think it's important that we ask our state and federal officials to try to assist us in any way financially that they can. They do represent the members of our community, so that I think it's important that we stay in contact with our state and federal representatives to ask them at any opportunity that they can to help us with some of these projects that we do have in works and where we might have coming up in the short future. And anytime I've talked of any of them, they've been more than helpful, but they said identify the areas that you're looking for help, and we will be happy to try to get as much assistance as possible, so it's good that we're identifying these areas to ask for their assistance. So, I appreciate the efforts that were put into this.
Counselor Cuddy?
I also think that the city is taking a step in the right direction. We just hired a senior planner, and I think that with another senior planner, we'll be able to apply for more grants and hopefully bring some state and federal, more state and federal money than we're already getting for these capital projects and grants.
I too. Whenever I've been with our representatives, they've always asked, "How can we help? What can we do for you?" And now, if we pass this resolution, we can memorialize it. They're all well aware of what we need, and they're all aware of the same things that we need, so instead of everyone striking out on their own, I think just the correct way of going, so... Clerk, have you called the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Aye. Carry.
Council resolution number 81 of 2014, authorizing a public hearing for the citizen participa- let me start again, hearing for the citizen participation plan related to Community Development Block Grant Program. We have a sponsor, Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Rosika.
Council resolution number 81 of 2014, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby authorize that a public hearing be held before the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, on the 8th day of May, 2014, at 6:00 PM at City Council Chambers, first floor of Memorial City Hall, Auburn, New York, concerning the citizen participation plan related to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise this resolution in the official newspaper of the City of Auburn in accordance with the governing, state, and local requirements.
Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Kamardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Aye.
Council resolution number 82 of 2014, requesting the council-approved request- Counsel Resolution Number 82 of 2014, requesting the council approve a request for proposals for a time and attendance system. We have a sponsor, Counselor Resika, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Counsel Resolution Number 82, 2014. Whereas the current practice of recording time and attendance for the City of Auburn is outdated and many organizations are on the second or third version of an automated system. Whereas the city still relies exclusively on a paper-based system, which requires significant staff time to compile and report time for employees. And whereas modern time and attendance systems also provide opportunities for employees to perform certain self-service functions like reviewing their leave accrual, requesting vacation time, and viewing their individual pay records, all of which relieves the burden from the payroll, work, and administrative staff of the department. And whereas it is estimated that there will be a return on investment of well over $100,000 per year based on reduced time to process time cards, reduced errors in time reporting, and reducing proper payment of overtime. And whereas staff is requesting that the City Council approve a request for proposals from qualified vendors, after which a negotiated contract for services with the lowest qualified bidder will be presented to council for consideration. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the issuance of a request for proposals for an automated time and attendance system for the City of Auburn.
Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll then, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Financial Resolution Number 83 of 2014, authorizing the creation of a refuse fund in parentheses, special revenue fund. We have a sponsor, Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Financial Resolution Number 83 of 2014. Whereas trash collection service provided by the City of Auburn is currently accounted for in the general fund and supported by property taxes and general state aid. And whereas the Office of the New York State Controller, Division of Local Government and School Accountability Accounting and Reporting Manual for counties, cities, towns, and villages, soil and water conservation districts, and libraries outline special revenue funds, Gatsby Codification Section 1300, which account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for a specific purpose. And whereas the guidance referenced above allows for a refuse special revenue fund with a designation of CL. And whereas the operations previously accounted for under A8161 refuse collection in the general fund should be moved to the newly established fund. And whereas the fund will be supported by the general fund until a fee schedule has been approved by the council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council authorizes the establishment of a refuse collection fund with a designation of CL, and where the operations previously accounted for and account A8161 are transferred to CL 8161.
Counselor Camardo?
Mayor, with the confusion of this program that's recently talked about and the speakers we had here earlier this evening, I know I've gotten quite a few calls from members of the community. I know that there's been, the citizen just reported on this the other day. I think it should, we should give the community an opportunity to come in and speak on this. We should have a public hearing on it so that everybody's aware of the program. Maybe a launch could be, happen next week during our work session, and then we can have further talks the week after, during our budget presentations. But I think it's important that the general public, the taxpayers of the community, have an opportunity to speak about this program or this proposal that's being made not by members of council, as one individual said tonight, but was presented by the city manager. So, I think it, I think it would be important that we at least take the opportunity to let the general public or the taxpayers of the community have an opportunity to come in and speak on this, have well-understanding of what's happening with this program, and we give them that opportunity. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for at least two weeks, next week having proper presentation given to the community, and after that a vote, or make it part of the budget process however council wants to move forward with it.
Counsel Resika?
I'd like to second that motion. I think that there is a great deal of confusion and given some calls that I have and exactly the same experience I've seen here in chambers this evening, that there's not a full understanding of this. I understand that, you know, pretty much there was no coverage, virtually no coverage of it when it was first introduced. This is past week, it got some level of coverage that piqued the interest of a few people here. So, I really feel that to vet this out fully to the public so they fully understand all the cause and effects and the ramifications and how it directly affects them, that we should have this time to allow public comment and basically, pretty much a public hearing on it.
Very well. Sorry.
There is a motion to table.
Motion to table. Would you call the question or take the roll, call vote in regards to tabling this item?
Yep, motion to table financial resolution number 83. Counselor McCormick?
I have to tell you why I'm voting no, not to be obstinate. I think if we table it, we can't talk about it. Once it's tabled, it's...
Sure, you can talk about it under other business, you can talk whatever you like.
But people have been waiting. I think if we don't ta, if we just say no to tabling for now and allow it to be discussed in, I know I had questions as everyone else did, and I think the staff has brought some information. If we table it, they can't hear, the people that have been waiting won't be able to get more information, which I think would be good, because I think there's a lot of misinformation. So, I'm going to vote no on tabling it.
Counselor Camardo?
I'm going to vote yes that we table, and I'm sure staff can give their presentation. I'm not saying that the staff cannot give a presentation tonight, I'm just saying there won't be a vote on council about this. So, I would vote yes that we do table it to give our constituents the opportunity to vent this process and be able to come in and talk about it. That's what City Hall is all about, to come in and talk about the process and talk about, this is your business, this is your tax dollars. They should have an opportunity to speak on it, so, yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote not to table it because I do think that I want to hear more information about these resolutions, both this one and the succeeding resolution tonight, because the sooner we know, the sooner we know more about this, the people of Auburn, the sooner they will, the people of Auburn will be more informed with some of the concerns that they may have. So, I'm voting no.
Counsel Resika?
No, I agree with Counselor Camardo. This needs to be examined by the public. There's nothing stopping the presentation materials this evening. It simply can, that can be move on, it's just more information. I really feel that this is a subject that we really need to listen to the constituents on. Just the small group that we had tonight that commented on it gives me indication that there's a strong misunderstanding of what's being proposed here. I really feel that we need to offer the taxpayers this opportunity to ask questions and engage the council and staff in fact-finding and help make a decision by, for us, by listening to our constituents and seeing what they really want to do. So, I'm going to say yes to tabling it.
Mayor Quill?
I'm voting no. I want this information out to the public. I don't see where we talk about it under other business or next week. Let's get it all on the table, not only in this resolution, but the following resolution. I want the public to be know, to know what's going on. So, this is a fair, open time to do it, this is the way we operate. And lastly, in regards to a public hearing, we will have a public hearing prior to the vote on the budget. I believe it's scheduled for a week prior, a week prior before the budget has to be heard. So, I'm voting no, and I'm asking Mr. Selby and whomever else to move on with this presentation.
Excuse me, may I ask a question about procedure? I just want to clarify so that we know what we're talking about. If we tabled it, we can't talk about it, is that correct? That's what I was under the impression. That's why I thought tabling it would shut the conversation down.
Well, not necessarily. What you can, what you can do when you bring it back up is it has a sponsor and it has a second to be reintroduced to the floor, and then there, in that there is a new sponsor and second, you can have discussion at that particular time. Discussion amongst yourselves, that's slightly different than discussion among the public.
Well, for tonight, what I wanted to be sure we did, and I think we're saying the same thing, we want the public to be informed, that's why we're here. And I was under the impression if we tabled something, we move on to the next resolution, and there's no discussion. That's what's been happening anyway. And I didn't want that to happen because people are talking about it. I don't want to go home tonight and not have spoke a word about this. This is the hot topic.
I wanted to vote, if we were going to vote on it, that the vote would be tabled for two weeks. We could talk about it tonight, we could have further discussion next week, and we could have a vote on it in the following two weeks from tonight, so that everybody has an opportunity to come in and speak about this. Counsel, I think that's what the majority of the council is trying to accomplish. I believe that, because I, we've got to get off, it's been, it's open for discussion so we can talk about it. So, you're not going to vote on it tonight? I, I'm more than likely, I'm going to ask, or ask one member of council to table this after our discussion, but I would like to have all the information that's available. If that's, if that's what you're... That is my intent, sir. I have no problem with that at all, but I just don't want to vote on this and not give the taxpayers the opportunity to call us, understand it, and move on. I agree wholeheartedly, not only this resolution, but the following one. I want all the information out at one point so that everyone has the same understanding and work from there. I couldn't agree with you more. I just don't want to vote on this tonight, and then it's done and over with and we move on. The only thing I would probably vote in favor of in regards to this resolution is to table it in a short period of time.
Just to talk about it before we table?
We're all accomplishing the same thing. Absolutely. Okay. Absolutely, absolutely.
The current motion to table does not carry.
Thank you.
We're on the same page, so.
Discussion by council in regards to this.
Could we have the, or is it too soon for, this is just to set up an account, a fund. Would it be too soon to ask to have the presentation during this part of the discussion about the trash?
I don't, I don't believe they're one and the same, council. As you said, and I'll look to Mr. Fusco. This is just to set up a, an accounting, to accomplish accounting issue.
Right. Passing 83 does not bind you to pass 84, which I think is the meat and potatoes that you want public input on.
I want public input on the whole procedure. Absolutely, absolutely.
But is 83, would we do that anyway? Would that be of good practice to have a separate fund, whether we did it, whatever way we do it? That's a good question.
Laura?
I don't think it matters.
There's no fiscal implications to setting up the fund, it's just setting it up separately, and that way you can track it separately. So, you don't have to, even if you set up this fund and decide not to set up a fee-based system, it doesn't have any implications. You don't have to set up a fee-based system by setting up the fund, it just tracks it separately.
Would you still track it if we decide not to go with a fee and just do what we've been doing right along? Would that fund be used?
Yes.
So, we'd need the fund one way or the other?
If we, if we don't pass, if we don't pass the trash collection fee, then you wouldn't need any fund.
You don't need it, but you, it doesn't have any impact.
Right, it's being collected by the assessment, so it's not going to go on a fee.
Right, but setting up the fund doesn't require you to have a fee, it just allows for it to be tracked separately, which I don't think is a bad thing. It doesn't need to happen, but it's not, it would just, it would show more transparency to the program.
Counsel Resika?
Yes, I'm, I fully understand what the gist of the conversation is, but I feel that even passing this will kind of, maybe if we don't pass it this time, maybe opens the door for a later discussion, which may or may not be favored by the popular vote of the constituents if they were allowed to. So, I'm a little bit hesitant on just saying go ahead with this, because it kind of puts a framework in place that maybe we don't really need. I know, I know what the comptroller's saying, it is a separate account, it does allow a little bit more focus and visibility on it, but then again, I can, I can understand, well, this is like the next, first stepping stone towards that, so I'm a little bit, a little bit torn on it.
Counsel Cuddy?
I see Counsel Resika's concerns, although I do like the idea and how he puts it, it puts a framework in place, and it does focus on visibility. What we have here, the reason why this resolution and the succeeding resolution is in place is that we have a current system of property taxes that doesn't pay for the services of trash pickup. And what really needs to happen is that if we create this fund, at least we'll have an idea of how much actually goes into trash pickup, and we can track it, and it is more transparent. So, and the other thing is that, is that it may, we don't know what is going to happen, you know, how this is going to turn out, but I think the first step is showing the people of Auburn that we are trying to isolate an aspect of our government that is not sustainable, and we're trying to show them that this is how much it costs to pay for trash pickup, and we want to be able to have it be competitive, fair, but we need to set up that fund first. So, it's, it's an acknowledgement that a change needs to happen, and that is why I'm going to support this. How we go about it, that is where I think the public input is going to be valued the most. But right now, we, I think we do have to do something to set up a fund. It is, to me, it's innocuous. It does set up a framework, but that framework is not determined yet, and it's really, it is up to the people to inform us, to inform the council, and, but I also think that the city manager and city staff need to present to council and to the people of Auburn where they, you know, where they see this proposed resolution, how we can make our trash collection sustainable.
Counsel McCormick?
Again, and I know we said this is open for just discussion, this, if we didn't have the fee, the resolution about the fee issue next, I still think this fund, we have the water fund, we have the landfill, the power utility fund, we can look at each of those as little businesses and how they work and how we're sustaining, paying for them, who uses them, can really look at it and manage it better. And I think that's what a lot of these different discussions about auditing, transparency, all the things that we've been told are needed in our, how we do business in our finance department, this is exactly what we've been asking for. I think we need this fund isolated. It's one of those services that's connected to the landfill, too, and we need to really be keeping our eye on all of this. So, I think setting aside an account, whether we fund it through the general fund tomorrow or not, this fund needs to be set up anyway. So, I think I'm going to support voting in favor of setting up the fund. He'll just get this done, no matter what happens.
Counsel Camardo?
If you want to track a fund, you can look at the budget, as all the accounts are set up here in the budget. That's part of the budget of the City of Auburn, first of all. Secondly, you talk about fees, this is just another fee that you're going to be charging a taxpayer in other tax.
This is the, we're talking about the fund.
I understand, I want to talk about, I'm responding to Counsel Cuddy. The taxpayers of the City of Auburn fund all services to the city, whether it be through fees or taxes, and we could start taking out public safety, we could start having a fee for that, we could start having a fee for public works, we could start going right down the line and charging for everything. But people, the taxpayers of the City of Auburn pay through their taxes, they have trash pickup, they pay for public safety, they pay for their roads to be fixed, they pay for their roads to be plowed. So, that's part of the fee. What's happening here now is this whole program is being looked at or is being presented to us as another fee. That's what's being, another tax, the taxpayers of the community. And it's unfortunate that that's happening, because the taxpayers of this community are paying too much as it is now, and enough's enough. They cannot afford any more new taxes. And unfortunately, the managers presented a budget we're going to be looking at tonight is loaded with more fees. And when do we stop? Because the taxpayer out there is burdened enough, when do we stop and say enough is enough?
I just, again, I think this is for the next, the next resolution.
All tied and together, council.
But I will just say that it is tied together. But I will just say that it is tied together. But I will say this. I don't see any harm setting up a separate fund because in a way, it's not so much for us. Obviously, we can look at a line item on a budget. But this is really to articulate to the people of Auburn that this is how much we pay for trash pickup, you know, and, and then they can compare to what it would be like if it was, you know, if it was private, you know. What I would like to do is at least set up this fund so that we can show that we are considering this. And, and again, this is, you know, if we're going to get more input from the public, then, then that is what democracy is. So, but I do believe that this fund is going to outline a need and, and it's been identified by city staff. And Mr. Selby, I am in favor of creating this fund.
Laura. From, from an accounting standpoint and for our taxpayers, is there a downside for the taxpayers for creating this, this individual account?
No.
Is, is there an upside for them? Or is it a wash?
Just more transparency. There's no real, other than that, there's no real upside just for creating the fund.
And nothing else changes, the way that, other than the way that the, the funds are accounted for? Which is done through your office? Am I correct? Okay. Yeah. Counsel, at this time, I'll make a motion that we table this for two weeks. I believe you said, Counsel, two weeks? If that's, yeah, two weeks and then if we need an extension, we'd ask for, for that at times.
I second that.
Motion to table by Mayor Quill, seconded by Counselor Carmo. Counselor McCormick?
Well, let me think. In, in the interest of teamwork, I'll vote to table it until we...
Counselor Carmo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rizika?
Yes.
Hi.
Table.
Very good. Thank you.
Does this also, by, by process here, table eighty-four? Is that going to be separately tabled?
We have to, we have to bring that up to the floor and go from there, counsel. Financial Resolution Number eighty-four, two thousand fourteen, authorizing the trash collection fee. We have a sponsor. Counsel McCormick, seconded by Counsel Cuddy.
Financial Resolution Number eighty-four of two thousand fourteen. Whereas the refuse fund was established...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got ourselves in a pickle here.
Refuge fund.
Guess that could be changed to may or may not be.
That's why I asked the question, because of the wording of the resolution.
Read it as is. If it needs to be amended, we can work on that in my office.
Whereas the refuse fund was established in Resolution Number eighty-three and the general fund currently supports the refuse collection fund and the refuse collection fund provides a discreet service to city residents. And whereas each resident does not pay an equal share for the same service and the fee estimated to cover expenses is eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents per month, per unit. And whereas it is necessary to empower the treasurer to waive the fee for any unit which is intentionally unoccupied and produces no refuse or for persons who have purchased a landfill pass to remove their own refuse and sufficient support for the waiving of fees will be required and kept on file. And whereas the method of billing will be included as a line item on water and sewer bills to reduce overall costs to the city. And now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council establishes a fee of eleven dollars and fifty-nine cents per month, per unit, for curbside refuse collection to be recorded in a fund and billed with water and sewer exclusive of waivers received effective June first, two thousand fourteen. And be it further resolved, the treasurer is empowered to waive the fee for any unit which is intentionally unoccupied and produces no refuse for persons who have purchased a landfill pass to remove their own refuse.
Mayor?
Counsel Rizika.
I'd like to open up and say, I'd like to make a motion to table this in light that we tabled the previous motion, or resolution, I should say.
Motion to table, is there a second? Counsel Carmo? Please call the roll.
Motion to table Resolution eighty-four.
I'm voting no.
Counsel McCormick?
Oh, sorry, no.
Counselor Carmo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
No.
Counsel Rizika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
No. I'd like to see the presentation.
I would, too. I have a question.
One second, please. Clerk jumped on me last time because I didn't give him a chance to say anything.
The motion to table does not carry, Mayor.
All right, very good. Counsel McCormick?
I hate it when they did that to me, too. In the reading of the resolution, it said water and sewer bill. And, and talking with someone this week, I thought it was, it was going to be on our tax bill, just to be clear, so that isn't hanging out there. Got to nip it in the bud. Nip it. That's it.
What I'd like to do, counsel, with your permission, I'd like to turn this over to Laura and Mr. Selby.
Could I, but I'm sorry, could I get an answer? Because that's out there right now, that it's on the tax water bill.
I believe that's probably going to be part of your presentation.
Right, we're going to address that in the presentation. And, and actually...
All right, but I'm going, oh my God, I knew it.
It would change this, is what we're proposing.
I'm all about the audience. Oh. Your honor.
That was going to be requested to be amended because the resolution had to be in last Friday.
Right, oh, I understand, but that's a hot one.
Yeah.
That's a hot button, right there.
So I think hopefully this presentation, it's not going to satisfy everybody's desires, but at least bring some clarity to what's out there for discussion about the issue. And, and I think there is some misunderstanding and it's, it's our, our fault for not getting it out there earlier, but we've had some, I think, good discussions among staff and we're trying to present tonight a presentation that will help bring some clarity to the whole issue.
Okay. We're first going to discuss the current system. Our current trash collection and disposal funding is based on taxes and because not everyone pays the same amount of taxes, there are inequities in how much support each taxpayer gives to the program. Single-family household subsidized trash collection for multi-family properties. The true cost of the service is approximately one point one million dollars, which is hitting from consumers. This is all paid for out of general fund revenues, thirty-six percent of which is property taxes, and the remaining is sales tax, state aid, fees, et cetera. This is a picture of the general fund budget allocation when trash is included. Trash is this green sliver up here, but I thought it would be good just to see what is included in the general fund budget that's supported by those revenue, or by the general fund revenues. I did the same thing for the revenue allocation. Yes.
Yeah. It would have been kind of a little bit more clearer to actually have the dollar amounts instead of the, the pie pieces or, or a percentage and then the total number. I mean, it's a graphic illustration, true, but I, I think dollars and cents make more sense than, than pieces of pie.
I can provide that.
Okay.
And I can do the same for the revenue piece.
Okay.
This also shows the different types of revenues that come into the general fund. The biggest piece is property taxes, but that piece doesn't make up even half of the total revenue to the general fund. Other taxes and fees make up the next largest piece, that's sales tax, pilots, franchise fees, and whatnot. So what we wanted to do was show the trash collection by multi-units versus single units, just to show why we're saying that there are inequities. This is a two-unit parcel, two living units, which is what we are defining a unit as right now. This is a two-unit parcel and these weren't staged or anything. This was, these were pictures taken this week during the trash collection. This is a three-unit parcel. Another two-unit. This is a one-unit parcel. And another one-unit parcel. And there were a lot of pictures we could have used, but we didn't want to just overload you with pictures. I think you get the point that we were trying to make. So the advantage is that each living unit will pay for the service they're receiving. Refuge collection will support itself independently from taxes as it's no longer sustainable in the general fund. The general fund will receive support for administrative costs associated with providing the service. Costs will be minimal to citizens. When the tax levy goes up, fees, unless they are not covering the service, won't go up with property tax levies.
They will, will or will not?
They will not. They will not be tied, the fees will not be tied to the property tax levy. Parcels which are tax exempt, for example, pilots and nonprofits will, that receive service, will help support the program. We did an area survey. Two cities around do not provide trash collection. Cortland, Binghamton, and Ithaca, our pay-as-you throw. This is a per-bag system ranging from three dollars to four fifty a bag. Yes.
Just to be clear, per bag is different from what we're proposing.
Correct.
Okay.
And just as an illustration, at three dollars a bag and assuming two bags per can and five cans, which is our limit, five thirty-two gallon cans, collection would cost thirty dollars per week or fifteen hundred dollars per year.
That's the other cities that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
That's if they had...
If we did what they do.
One of the assumptions here that you're making is that these are not very large bags. I would like to know what the gallon capacity of these bags is.
We're assuming a thirty-two gallon container with two bags in it.
Well, I understand what you're assuming, but I'm saying, is that bag a thirty, is, basically, is it a thirty-two gallon bag? Or is it a kitchen-sized bag?
I think that they fit into a thirty-two gallon container.
No, there's different sized bags.
Different communities do it differently. Some, you have to buy a sticker to put on a bag that you purchase. And, you know, if you have a thirteen gallon, it's less. If you have a thirty-two gallon bag, it's a little bit, they have graduated prices. So we assumed, most, most of our residents use thirteen gallon bags.
I understand that, but these, these three-dollar or four-dollar, fifty-dollar, fifty-cent bags, I doubt are, are fifteen gallon bags. I, I think they'd be probably more like a thirty-two. I believe that the, the town of Owosso offers the larger bag as part of their pay-as-you-throw program. It's not a, it's not a kitchen-sized garbage bag by any stretch of imagination. So I, I, I guess I got to say that maybe your area survey, maybe your cost per week here is, is...
We can look into that.
Is not quite representative, I'll say.
Continuing with the area survey, Syracuse continues to use their general fund to support trash collection. Rochester, Elmira, Jamestown, and Rome are all parcel fee-based. So your tax...
I'm sorry, is that the, what's, I was going to say, what is that compared to what we're talking about?
Parcel fee is the actual unit. So whether it's a single unit or a two-unit, three-unit, that one house, that one structure is what the fee is. Elmira is the cheapest out of all three at a hundred and eighty dollars per year. The other ones were significantly more. Rochester went up, too. Rochester does have, they have a parcel fee-based unit, but if you have more units, they charge you more. So it's, it's a combination of the per-unit and parcel. Water Town is a combination of fee-based and per-bag and it's the residence choice.
Can you just, which, which one combines with the, the parcel fee, but if you have more units, it goes up? Which city?
Rochester. And Rochester starts for a single unit in the three hundred range?
So for a single unit, three hundred?
A year.
A year.
The four towns directly neighboring our borders do not offer trash collection services. They, residents can hire a private hauler at the cost detailed on the following slide. Yard waste and callbacks are not included in the private hauler service. The surrounding towns, we did a small survey of common haulers. We Care was twenty-seven dollars a month. Casella was thirty-one dollars a month. These two both allowed a ninety-six gallon totter to be picked up with recyclables every other week. Dependable is based on family size and collects both trash and recyclables weekly. So that was either two hundred and twenty-four dollars a year or two hundred and forty-four dollars a year, based on two people in your home and based on four people in your home, The current proposal is approximately thirty-four dollars and eighty cents a quarter for up to five thirty-two gallon cans. We're assuming approximately two bags per can. We will continue the five-can limit, which is a hundred and sixty gallons. Remember that We Care and Dependable were ninety-six gallons and the four family, four person family for Dependable was ninety-six gallons. The fee-based system will position the city for future options. So if we start out with a fee base like this, we decide we want to make it even more equitable, we can go to a per-bag system. And this is kind of a stepping stone to get us there. It was determined in this study that the refuse collection committee did that the per-bag system was the most equitable. That was a few years ago. Fees will be included, included in tax bills. After doing some analyzing between this presentation and the time the resolution was written, was determined that that would be the best way to get this out there. The tax bill will note a sanitation charge of a hundred and thirty-nine twenty per year, which is eleven sixty per month, two sixty-eight per week, fifty-four cents per can, if you use your maximum. And if you put two bags in each thirty-two gallon can, that's twenty-seven cents per bag. This includes at least two visits per week. The City of Auburn proposal continues to do wastely...
Would you back up just one slide? What, what do you mean by includes at least two visits per week?
There's on Mondays, I believe it is, there's, there's weekly yard waste pickup.
For the yard waste on one day and irregular trash on another day? Okay. All right. It almost could be interpreted that they're going to come back to the city twice a week to pick up the refuse, so I just wanted clarification.
I'll get to that. Included is weekly yard waste collection, ninety, nine hundred and three tons in two thousand thirteen and sixteen tons of Christmas trees. This includes collection skips, callbacks, and garbage put out late. So if you forget to put your trash out and call the city, the city will come back and get it for you. This also includes special event collection.
And that, is that what's referred to, is the six hundred and eighty-four incidents? That's how many times we went back because someone forgot or it got skipped or?
Yes.
That's pretty nice.
We wanted to compare a fee base versus a tax-based trash collection and the effect on the general fund. This would be if, to make the budget work, we had to cut out trash service, we would provide a private hauler option. There would be no city service. We would reduce the allowable tax levy by the amount allocated to refuse collection. This would be a benefit of, this is a benefit of approximately three dollars and seventy-two cents a month for a hundred thousand dollar home or about forty-five dollars a year. The net benefit to the city's general fund is approximately one point one million per year or ninety-four thousand a month. And the taxpayers under this would be able to hire a private hauler service. But as we saw in the previous slides, the private hauler service is a more expensive option for a citizen. Continuing with the city service option on a fee-based system, we will be able to reduce the allowable tax levy to the city by three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. We are not trying to hide anything. There is a fee associated with this. The overall cost is likely to be higher depending on your assessed valuation. Increased revenue to the city of approximately eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars because of fees collected from multi-family properties. The city continues to pay for equipment and manpower at a cost of ninety-four thousand dollars per month. Yard waste pickup and callbacks are retained at no additional cost. Does anyone have any additional questions? Anything else we can research for next time?
Well, the, the ninety-four thousand a month that the costs, that's, that's taxpayer funds that it costs. When you had to look at how to... you had to look at how to, how much all this costs and break it down to find out how much per bag, per can, was, was, how much work was that? Is it easier, will having a fund set aside for that facilitate an easier look at that and tracking and all that?
It's tracked separately in its own department in the general fund, so it's not, it's easier when you look at a fund separately for the general public. For me, I know which department it's in, I can just go look at that.
That's true. So, for you, it's not, but I, if I wanted to look at seeing what the city is spending for my refuse collection and what my water, the funds are all separated, so I can actually identify with what it costs me as a taxpayer, what am I getting for what I'm paying? So, the 94, if we did away with the service of refuse collection, that would, that would mean everybody's on their own? You find your, you can get a landfill sticker if you wanted to, or hire a private hauler? Okay?
Yep. Another item that I should probably mention is that we are not able to service large apartment complexes, places that have a dumpster where they are unable, where the dumpster picks up and drops it into their truck. We aren't able to service that. We would exempt those people from the fee.
So, the Boyle Center is exempt?
The Boyle Center...
They would have a dumpster, they have a dumpster. So, pilot properties will have to, would now have to pay for, if they were buildings that had curbside trash pickup, they would have to pay for it, which they don't now. Nonprofits, would they be included in the, they, so that's addition?
Nonprofits are now...
Now. Well, they get pickup, but they don't pay.
They pay.
They, they do, they pay per square foot, but...
Oh, but per square foot, okay.
On their water bill.
Oh, on their water bill?
Mm-hmm.
So, so that's not gonna be, how would they be handled?
Oh, we would continue to bill them the same.
Same way? Okay. There was another one, the pilots that... But so, I'm just trying to help understand this. If I'm a single family and I have a bag or two a week, I'm paying my property taxes, I'm a good citizen, but the, there's a home next to me that has, it's a two family home, and they say just do twice as much trash, they're paying their property taxes, but the cost in general, overall is divided so that I end up paying, kind of like helping pay for their trash pickup, more or less? So, this would equalize?
Yeah, I guess the best way to consider this is say your home and your neighbor's home, you're a single unit, they're a two unit building. If they have twice as much garbage as you, and your house is assessed at the same value, you're seeing, you're paying the same amount, but you're getting half the service.
I see.
You're gonna have to what?
Half the service.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Cuddy?
I'm interested in seeing another, I guess, one, another scenario based on some of the comments that were made tonight by the public. One would be something, if you overlay the Rochester system on basically the geography, demographic of Auburn, see if the parcel fee, see if we can come up with something similar to this, but, and then how that would fare if, again, if there's more than one unit, how would that, how would that relate? So, so, again, I think that was one of the concerns that was raised tonight. Maybe something like the Rochester thing, how that would work in Auburn. You know, would it be $300 per year, or based on Auburn's population and demographics, how would that fare in Auburn? If we could come up with a scenario like that?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Just the last thing I'd like to say is, it's too bad that, and a couple of people came to the podium tonight and said this, that through this proposal, you're giving $398,000 in credit back to the taxpayers, but you're taking it back because technically the budget, the city budget right now, proposed budget is over 4% increase in property taxes. That's, that's what's not being fair in this whole proposal.
That's the allowable, yes.
Well, because we're given, I shouldn't say we, the manager's proposal is giving the break to the taxpayers and taking it right back. So, the overall, if you took trash out, the overall increase in property taxes, just with his proposal, is four and a half percent. In property increase, in property tax increase.
Net, you mean?
Net.
Across the board.
Laura, or Doug, did you have a response to that, or at this point, or? Go ahead, Laura.
The, yes, we would suggest raising to the cap. If the trash was still in there, we would also have a much, much larger gap.
And unfortunately, nothing's been done in the proposal to see for cost savings or...
Exactly.
Realignment of services at a better, efficient way. The proposed budget's loaded with more taxes or fees, unfortunately, to the taxpayers of the community. That's, that's what I have a problem with when I look at this whole proposal, because we're working, we're going right now to an area where it's gonna be, next thing that will be proposed is a per bag proposal for everybody across the board. And that's, that's, that's an unfortunate situation, because I heard people here support, they wanted to make sure the bid had money for cleanup downtown, and the whole purpose of curbside pickup originally was to clean the city up, to make sure that people weren't dumping garbage in areas, and to make sure that it was cleaned up across the board. And under some of these plans, I don't, I'm not positive that's gonna happen, and how it's gonna be policed, how it's gonna be watched. I haven't heard any of that.
I think we talked about transparency earlier. What's happening is that this is something that we can isolate, and we can show the taxpayers, like this is how much it costs to take away your trash.
Counsel, look at your budget. Look at the budget. It's in the budget.
Counsel, who do you have to...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
So, this has been before council several times, and nothing has been done.
Not as long, not when I've been here.
Well, when, when Counsel Hutchinson was on council, they had considered the per bag fee. Something needs to be done, and they didn't do anything then. And here we are, 15, 16 years later, and we're, we're having probably the same argument. You know, I really think that something needs to be done, whether it's this proposal or something similar, it needs to be, we need to isolate the problem and address it separately. And rather than kind of keep it in this nebulous, you know, general fund, people need to know that, 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 you know, the city is doing its best to try to provide them a service that is affordable. And obviously, we can be, you know, the city could be attacked, it's like, oh, we're trying to, you know, get more money. We're just trying to make sure that they get the services that they enjoy, and make sure that it is paid for in a way that recognizes how much it costs to take away our refuse. Because the alternative would be, would be private collection, and it would cost the people of Auburn more money. So, I see it as the city finding ways to meet the people halfway so that we don't basically relinquish our responsibility for providing the services that matter to the people of Auburn.
Counsel, I think Counsel Rezika was next.
No, I'll...
No, no, that's okay.
Go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
All right, well, let me, let me start by saying the reoccurring theme from everyone I've talked to on this is they all said this is a smoke and mirrors method to claim to be under the tax cap and effectively increase the taxes to the city residents by, by nearly 5%. And I consistently hear that the city taxes continue to be out of proportion of our demographic and our population. You know, everybody's gotta remember, we are an entitlement city. We get community development block grant funding because of this classification. And this is because over 50% of the city residents make 80% or less than the median income. Now, the median income by the 2010 census for a household, it was $30,281. And median income for a family was $41,169. Now, the 80% number for a household is about $24,000. So, that's $24,000 or less for a household. And for a family, it was about $33,000. So, that's $33,000 or less per year. Now, these incomes make it hard for these families and households to make ends meet. And even if they rent, they're not immune, because the property owners will simply pass this cost on to the tenants. Now, we're, if this continues, the majority of the council's gonna set the path forward to higher taxes. You know, you're ignoring the city demographic and the citizen's ability to pay. This to me is a, you know, I don't care attitude, and I don't like it. I don't support this. This is just a service fee tax to get around the tax cap. Again, the net result is the taxpayers are gonna get burdened by almost 5% overall. Now, there's been no effort to contain costs yet. I have not seen any effort. And quite the opposite, you've increased them. You totally ignored all the recommendations from the audit committee, which was made up of local business leaders, and even ignoring the city auditor when he said recommended exercising caution. You know, we're giving it right here, we're willing to give out wage increases and adding positions, when the recommendation by the audit committee was for have across the board wage freezes and hiring freezes until financial, financial planning was put in place. Now, the other thing is, you know, the other point is wanting to borrow to fully pay for water fund improvements, which would add to the cost of debt service, even though it was 1.4 million in the, in the fund balance. And then by signing contracts, committing city funds, well before going through any budget process. Now, this tells me the ability to make the hard decisions, and you're building a budget around this trash fee proposal, will only increase the taxpayers' burden. This is a total failure to consider any other methods, such as restructuring opportunities in city departments, or even the potential, God forbid, the right sizing and restructuring of the fire department, which would be a huge reduction in the taxpayers' cost of operations for the city. If we did all this, if we did our work and looked for the right ways to do things and reduce costs, we wouldn't even probably have to look at this resolution today. And I gotta say, the newspaper had it right. This is nothing more than a budget shell game. Again, without any efforts, or even discussions on alternate plans, or looking for operations improvements that'll reduce the size of city government, and its costs. This is just passing the costs on to the taxpayers while even trying to make the hard decisions. I do not support this.
Counsel McCormick, you were next.
Thank you. There's a couple of comments, the smoke and mirrors issue, which I've heard it myself, and I've heard it here tonight. I do think that's a disservice to, to at least us and to the, especially the staff. Over the last three, four, 10 years, we've been cutting, cutting, cutting. We just cut, and don't ask why or what it's gonna do. It's just been, just grab a something and cut. They're working hard to look at ways to make the budget work, lessen the tax increase to citizens while continuing to provide service. There's a budget gap, and every month or every day since I've been in council, we've been trying to work at decreasing that, closing the gap. And from what I've just briefly read, as far as expenses go, the budget that the manager's proposing is got, I think he says expenditures in the proposed budget are down by 1.15%. That's a great thing. Everybody here is working to, and I think it's really not gonna be very productive. We say it's an I don't care attitude that the staff has or that council has. We are working to do the right thing to make it impact taxpayers the least. That's why people pay taxes, they want to have services, but I think they wanna pay for what they're getting, and in an equitable way. I think this is one way of trying to balance the budget, keep the service. This has been looked at many other times, not as far back as Counsel Hutchinson. It was looked at when I was city clerk, and I think Mr. Calavito referred to the committee that he was on, that spent, I think he said, two years. Citizens Committee did look at the pros and cons of everything, and I think they did come up with an idea that is similar to this, if not almost the same. I know based on things I've heard over the last week since this was brought up, a lot of misinformation is out there. I just, it's too bad, because it's causing anxiety, and it just, it grows. I think what we've seen here tonight are the facts. These are the facts. This is what it costs the City of Auburn to pick up one bag of trash, and we're trying to propose a way, this is a change, which I know is a hard thing. This is a change. If it was a good change, it might even be hard. I don't think anybody's trying to double dip or overcharge. I think we're trying to look at ways to balance the budget, pay for the services without cutting jobs, without cutting services, because we're right down to that point, I think. If we don't do something differently, and I mean operationally differently, we're gonna have to cut a service. And I don't think that's what anyone wants to see either. I think we have to look at this. We can't just automatically say, no, I don't support this. I think we need to talk about it. I think we need to understand it, and I think we need to give the citizens a chance to express their opinion about it, which they're totally, that's why we have public to be heard, that's why we have a public hearing. This is the city, the citizens, the taxpayers' place to be heard, and this is their budget. And we are just here trying to shepherd it to the right place, and I have, I do not think for one minute there's smoke and mirrors, or an I don't care attitude among anyone in this building, anyone. And I support going forward and looking into this.
Counsel Kama, I think, did you have your hand up, or no? I'm not sure if you did or not.
Go ahead, I'll go after...
Counsel Cuddy was first, then.
Go ahead.
Counsel Cuddy.
And, you know, and another thing is that I'm glad that we brought this to the floor, because otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to see the slideshow, and otherwise, we wouldn't be able to bring suggestions to our staff that addresses some of the issues and the feasibilities. So, I requested to, that our comptroller look into the parcel with some kind of, some kind of acknowledgement of units as, as an alternative. And again, I welcome, I welcome my colleagues to do the same, but, which differs from what Counsel Rezika said, that this, there's no discussion. There, we're having this discussion, and if we just tabled it, that would have been two weeks of silence, two weeks of innuendo, two weeks of, of, of the people not thinking about this as, as, as they should, and coming to city council and, and providing us with input. But I, I agree with Counsel McCormick that this is going in to a direction that acknowledges the, how much the service costs the city, but, and, and I think that the staff has done a good job, at least, in trying to address how we could change it so it could be, could be a little more equitable. I think there is a little bit more room which we can, we can work with, but I, I do appreciate the staff bringing this forward, and it's as, it's as out in the open as it can, it can be. So, to, to, to say it's a shell game, I can, I can understand that assertion, but it's all out in the open from my perspective.
Counsel.
Counsel Cuddy, when you make these comments, you gotta make sure that you're speaking about the facts, because you, what you said was they were gonna be tabled for two weeks, nobody was gonna have any input on it. I wanted to have a complete public hearing on this whole process to make sure that the public was completely informed on it, first of all. Secondly, what's happening right now is the City of Auburn has a problem with spending. Okay? We're taking in less revenue than we are, expenses are much higher. Same thing with our household incomes, our budgets. If you're taking in less, you gotta make adjustments accordingly. That's what's happening. You can't put that burden on anybody else but yourself. That's what we need to look at. We need to look at better ways of providing services more efficiently, effectively, reorganization of our departments, how we can go ahead and provide services that the taxpayers want at a more efficient rate. We need to do that. That's gonna happen in the budget in the next couple of weeks. We can all have an input on that. But to say we just keep spending our way out of this, that's, that's not, that's not, that can't happen.
But this could be exactly what you're looking for. I mean, we isolate the issue, I think, again, this year, something needs to happen.
Counsel, just, just let me finish. I have no problem in looking at programs like this, but when I see a program, give the taxpayers a break, and then take it right back for a four and a half, four and a half percent increase proposed by the manager, I have a problem with that. And that's what this whole process is about.
Counsel McCormick.
Would it be possible, Counsel Kama brought up a good point to maybe we should talk about, is what we've done at the landfill to reduce, I mean... talk about, is what we've done at the landfill to reduce, I mean, they haven't been just sitting out there. I wonder if Mike could come up, and Mike Talbot, and talk about what you've done over the last few years to cut back, to reduce overhead, operational costs, what you've done.
Yeah, probably the last four or five years, we've looked at some of these very issues. And I think everyone can remember when we combined five days of garbage collection, and we now do it in four. So we're able to offer the, because if everyone remembers, the brush on the roadways was becoming an issue. You know, I think it's great. I don't know, I've never seen a town like Auburn. People love to do yard work and put it to the curb, so that's good. And everyone's properties look nice. But, you know, someone has to collect it. So what we've done is really condensed our garbage collection from five days to four days. So obviously, we're working much more efficiently, and that, you know, we're still collecting five days a week. So we're actually offering a really good service, provided it's bagged or containerized for yard waste on Mondays. And that's worked out well. And, you know, what we've done, including, you know, even our plow routes, if you want to get, you know, we've eliminated plow routes to be a little bit more efficient with the amount of staffing we have, so, and that's just what we've done with our garbage collection.
Is staffing gone down in the last?
It's gone down, yeah. We've maintained our level for the last few years, but yeah, it is down.
See, I don't know if you can tell, ten years ago, how much, how many people did you have?
Well, we've, in just refuse collection, we've probably lost, you know, in the last ten years, maybe four positions.
Okay.
And they're critical, because, you know, it's a physical activity, and there are injuries, and there is vacations, there is sick time. So I know today, you know, this week, we were short, because we have a long-term injury, and we don't have any seasonal staff right now for various reasons, and, you know, it's been stressful this week for garbage collection. So if we were a little late to anyone's house, we apologize, but we're doing the best we can.
Sure. One more question. Is the Saturday hours at the landfill, that was cut, is that part of this budget, or is that part of a different budget?
No, because that comes out of the solid waste fund. That's, and if you, didn't mention the word recycling either, because that also comes out of the solid waste fund. This is strictly garbage collection.
So there has been a concerted effort to cut expenses in this department over the last few years.
And maintain the service.
And maintain the same service. I think, other than the holiday schedule, which everybody misses, that everybody, they do, the guys are out there, whether the weather's good or not, it's lots to do, and I'm not here to pat the staff on the back, but I am. It's a lot to do in one day for a short, especially that kind of work with a limited staff.
Right. And I think what we have to keep in mind also, regardless of what program or how we decide to pay for it, we offer a very generous collection service for our garbage. Five cans is an awful lot. If you go to private, you know, you're probably allowed one can. Anything outside of that, you pay extra for. So, you know, we understand what people want, and we, you know, we just try to, try to come through for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Rizika.
But what we need to look at is not just the niche of this, we need to look at every service that the city provides, every little piece of the service to see what pieces of low-hanging fruit that you can pick and save some money. I mean, there's always these opportunities that we miss. And one of these things that baffles me here is we had the return of investment cost, and the draft budget was calculated at seven percent. Now, the return of investment is basically a charge that you add on top of the fees to cover some, actually to recover some or gain some funding. So now I understand that it went from seven percent to ten-point-three. So I'm going to have to ask the hard question when we do this budget, is why has this suddenly gone from seven percent to ten-point-three percent, from the initial draft to the final draft? These are the things, these are the hidden fees and hidden taxes that, like I said to Counselor Camardo, that's what we're dealing with. Where is all the money going to come from when you've got people that are having tough times making it meet now? You got to, like I said, we are an entitlement city, which is why we get the Community Development Block grant funding, and for the very reasons and the financial reasons that I expressed. This is why we get this money, is because we're not a wealthy city. So you've got to look at the demographic of the people out there and their ability to pay. The net increase on this is over and above their reasonable ability to pay. They're having trouble now. You can look at the, you know, what was it? I think it was Friday's paper, we had a what? How many pages of tax reports are in there that people were behind in their taxes? How many pages was there? Is that what we want to do? What are we going to do? We're going to say, "Here, you either pay your taxes and your trash fee, or you don't eat, or you don't have your power, or you can't drive to work"? What are we going to do? There's something that's got to happen to make this city affordable for its residents right now, and this isn't doing it. We have to, whatever it is, this is not going to be the solution to keep the city viable. All it's going to do is accelerate loss of population. I don't see any reason why, if someone cannot, you know, who can well afford to pay for their trash pickup, certainly, by all means, they can do that. But we're talking about people that have tough time making it now, and we haven't even raised anything yet.
I think, Counselor Rizika, are you done, sir?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Cuddy.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't mean to interrupt. I think, though, that the alternative, or one of the alternatives, which would be having everyone in Auburn go out and get their own private hauler to take it away, would even be more of a burden. This, to me, is the acknowledgement of exactly what you said, Counselor Rizika, is that, and what it does is it acknowledges that we need to do something to pay for this service, but keep it economical for the people of Auburn. And I believe that this or something similar does. If we just keep everything the same and do not act on this, we're just going to continue to have this argument fifteen years from now. I want to do something, and I think that this is at least addressing an issue.
Well, you brought up the word sustainability. Okay? And how many times have we heard the word sustainability tonight? Okay? Sustainability means the ability for the city tax residents to maintain the city at its finances. Right now, it's not sustainable. We've got some departments that are just not sustainable. They're overstaffed, the staffing level is just too much for the city to bear, and we all know which department I'm talking about.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't believe that, look, we got Elmira, okay? Elmira, which does the same footprint of us, does it with fifty-six full-time firefighters. And by the way, they have eighty-three police on total, on their police department. So you got, for the City of Elmira, they've got fifty-six firefighters. They do ten-to-twelve-man shifts and maintain the city at a safe level. It works for here, why can't it work for us?
Counselor McCormick, I think you were first.
No, I just had a syndrome or something.
Counselor Cuddy.
I think what I'm going to say is a little off-topic, but I just want to say.
We haven't, we haven't been on it for a while.
Okay. I just want to say that in the past, the council has looked at cutting, and without understanding the whole picture, and you cut, that can end up costing the city way more than if, if things were done properly. So I'm saying that, to just say that if we cut our way through it, doesn't always necessarily save the people of Auburn money. This is a way, and it's clear, at least it's a starting of a discussion. It addresses the issue of trash pickup. I want, I want to see more discussion on this, but I do want to see a change, or else we're going to be talking about this next year and the year after. It needs to pay for itself. This needs to pay for itself in some fashion, and the people of Auburn need to see what it, what goes into getting their trash taken off of their lawn every week, and their recyclables, and their shrubs.
Counselor.
I just want to say one thing, and we'll move on quickly. Counselor, there were certain reductions that had to be made in the last two years, and because of those reductions, even the managers admitting expenditures in the proposed budget are down by one-point-one-five percent. Those were due to some of the realignment that the council made last year. So yes, you do need to look at reductions and how you better provide services to the taxpayers. With that, I'll move it to you, Mayor, and you can move it along.
Counsel, I'm going to be upfront with, I had no intention in voting on this this evening, other than to table it. But if we did not discuss this this evening, it would be smoke and mirrors in my mind. And that's what everyone is concerned about, smoke and mirrors. We have to be upfront with our citizens, with everyone that lives in our community, so they know what is being proposed, how it's being proposed. As most of the council has said tonight, there's so many stories out there, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I want to get this all on the table so everyone understands. Everyone has an opportunity, every week from now till the night we vote on the budget, to discuss this. They're more than welcome, the public we heard, plus we have a public hearing prior to the budget vote. We all understand that. Mr. Selby and staff, thank you for the presentation. There were some questions raised, and I would, I would like to add to the list if it hasn't been, the return on investment that Counselor Rizika brought up, because I feel that deserves a response. But I believe you know everything else. I know you take some very good notes here about all the questions that were brought up, and I'm sure each of us, in one way or another, will be back in contact with yourself or staff with other questions. So with that, I'd make a motion we table this for this evening, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Motion to table Resolution Number Eighty-Four. Counselor McCormick.
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rizika?
Yes.
Mayor.
Aye. Thank you. Council Resolution Number Eighty-Five, Appointing a Deputy City Clerk. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Amendment Resolution Number Eighty-Five, two thousand fourteen, whereas on March twenty-ninth, two thousand one, the Auburn City Council appointed Michael Pettigras of Nine Hamilton Avenue in Auburn to serve as deputy clerk for the purposes of processing marriage licenses for inmates at Auburn Correctional Facility. And whereas the city clerk's office has been notified that Mr. Pettigras will no longer be serving in said position due to his receiving a job transfer. And whereas on May first, two thousand fourteen, there will exist a vacancy in the position of deputy clerk for the purposes of processing marriage licenses for inmates at Auburn Correctional Facility. And whereas it is the recommendation of the city clerk that Suzanne Fisher be appointed to fill the vacancy, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York that it does hereby appoint Suzanne Fisher of Twenty-Five North Fulton Street, Auburn, New York, to the position of deputy clerk for the purposes of processing marriage licenses for inmates at Auburn Correctional Facility. Set appointments to take effect.
Mr. Mason, I'll start out, if you don't mind, Counsel.
Go ahead, sure.
This position is not in your office.
No.
Is no funding from the City of Auburn.
No.
The name was forwarded by the State of New York or the local correctional facility.
Yes.
So there is no one on council had any part, to best of my knowledge, in the appointment or the request for this individual.
I was just going to ask how the name came forward, but if that's from the State, it's fine.
Right from the State Department of Corrections.
He's an, that's an employee of the State, the Department of Corrections.
It requires of the person that handles that side of the, we handle the side of the marriage license, which the person is not incarcerating, I guess that's the best way to say it.
That's nice.
And then they handle the side of the marriage license, the person is incarcerated. It requires somebody being in the facility, and it's an employee. Before Mike Pettigras, it was Mr. Bill Fulton, was it? And then he retired. Michael Pettigras had done it for the last twelve years. Now he's taken a transfer to another facility, so that created the vacancy.
I don't want to have the media thinking that we've had a closed-door meeting, and we've appointed someone based on political background or whatever. This was all new to all of us, and, or not, this appointment was new to all of us. And so basically, we have to, we don't have to, we need to pass a resolution to replace an individual who's moved on, and they've already said who they would like.
And we appreciate the council walking it out tonight. Otherwise, it would have been vacant for a half a month, and.
Is there a term on this, or as long as they want to do it?
As long as it's, as long as they're in the position.
They're actually.
Five to ten, Counsel.
Five to ten.
Life.
They're actually doing us a favor. There's no, they don't get extra compensation. Mostly, it's usually a counselor, not a correction officer, and it's just part of, lucky them, part of, they offer to do it. Otherwise, we would probably have to go in and do it.
It's an interesting side of the clerk's office.
Yes, it certainly is.
Would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rizika?
Yes.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry. It's too late. I'll wait for other business.
Localize?
None, Mayor.
Table legislation?
None.
Other business? I'm going to let Mr. Selby start, if we may.
Mayor and Counsel, we were able to send you the budget today, proposed budget, and it's been referenced here in some recent discussions. And I'd just like to kind of walk through it with you. You should have a hard copy in front of you. I'm scheduling it for discussion at the work session next week. So tonight, I just wanted to give the highlights for you and the public. This is a balanced budget. It's well under the tax cap, and it doesn't, for the first time in three years, include relying on fund balance to fill a budget gap. The tax levy, just for reference, in the previous budget was a hundred and sixty-three-thousand, five-oh-seven, above the previous year. This year, we're proposing is about a hundred and fifty thousand. That equates to about a dollar forty per month on a hundred-thousand-dollar property, and that compares to the impact of county and school taxes of four dollars and seventy-four cents a month on the same property. As mentioned earlier, the expenditures in the proposed budget are down by a little over one percent, but our revenues are also expected to be down somewhat. And then some of the major elements in this, we're making an assumption, and it may be a good one, it may not be, that our negotiations that are underway today with our bargaining units will result in us being able to have zero wage increases in the coming budget year. I believe there's a distinct possibility of us achieving that, but in this report, we've also put in the numbers for one percent increase for our general employees and one percent increase in our public safety. You can see the impacts there are in the tens of thousands of dollars. Pension amortization is something we're going to recommend, but not at the full amount. It'll be less than the full amount that we could amortize, so we're recommending an amortization of four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. We could potentially amortize two-hundred-and-forty thousand more than that, but I think, Laura, the comptroller feels that if we can avoid amortizing the full amount, we avoid the additional interest payments on that. The health insurance budget, we're going to maintain that steady, even though there's been a three percent increase in premium costs. We're going to assimilate those through a bit of a change in how we fund the program compared to, there's an equation that's used, whether you fund the maximum potential number of claims or a percentage of that. So we're proposing to set that at a halfway point between maximum and expected costs. And that insurance budget for the coming year will be five-point-seven-four million dollars. So it's a significant part of the budget. In the revenues, we have resurrected an idea that was discussed in the previous budget of a room occupancy tax. The idea here is that this is a tax that's not paid by city residents, it's paid by visitors. Tourist-based economies evolve systems to, like this, to charge additional fees on rental cars, on rooms, on the kind of amenities that are used by our visitors, and to defray the cost impacts to the residents. So there's a benefit to all residents for an increased tourism-based economy.
Excuse me, Doug, I hate to interrupt you, but.
Yes.
I remember this being talked about last year, and we were told that at some point, for some reason, we couldn't do this last year, and so we looked at this last year, we wanted to implement it, but we were somehow.
I was concerned that we were going to go beyond a cap. We haven't found that there's actually a cap on.
So I guess then, why didn't we, why weren't we, why didn't we do this last year when we wanted to?
I'll interrupt if I may. Didn't we talk about trying to get some of the money from the county? The county has a bed tax, and I.
No, no, we talked about this is our own.
Yeah.
No, no, we talked about this as our own, just like what we're doing here now.
We were trying to get a piece of the county's. That's what I remembered.
No, this is what we're looking to do. I think Lauren came up and she said, initially suggested this.
Yes, she did.
And then, and for some reason, it was, at least what I recall, that it was, there was some reason that we just couldn't do this. So to me, that this is something we can do now, but we couldn't do last time, is the answer I'm looking for.
I think, last time, as I recall, we never really vetted it thoroughly. It kind of came up and it was-
I thought we wanted to do it.
Well, it is in here.
Okay.
Budget proposal. We believe conservatively, we just assumed a conservative room occupancy number and average room rates, that it could generate $250,000 a year. We would, in this budget, assume that we would only get about a half a year of revenue because of the implementation time, so about $125,000. And 2%, just for those who, and I'm sure most people calculate it in their head, but if you're paying $100 a night for a room, it'd be $2. I don't know that it would make a pivotal decision as to whether somebody's gonna stay in Auburn or not, if they can afford a $100 a night room. We've talked about the trash collection proposal, so I won't go over that. This budget would hold two positions vacant. In the police department, we have four pending vacancies through July. Can I ask you one question? Are those police? Patrol positions? Retired patrol. And then various line item cuts would take $25,000 out of the parks budget that was in there for resurfacing tennis and basketball courts. We would put in a $1.1 million debt stabilization reserve, which has been in previous contracts, or previous budgets, I'm sorry. We could eliminate a month-to-month lease that we have at the Boyle Center, the $6,100. We have a continuing lease obligation at Schwartz Towers for the RSVP program, so we'd maintain that one. Eliminate engineering's four-wheel-drive vehicle and see if we can't find them a replacement vehicle or used vehicle. Decrease the fire department's vehicle maintenance budget by $10,000. Decrease the code enforcement building demolition budget by $50,000. It was $50,000 previous budget, preliminary budget, raised it to $100,000. I'm dropping it back to 50. We'd add two light-duty trucks to the DPW fleet, $40,000. We'd add road patching equipment to the DPW budget, $20,000. The, decrease the maintenance budget in streets by $30,000, recognizing newer vehicles being in the fleet. Reduce overtime in the snow removal budget by $20,000. Our numbers don't show that we spent the full amount of overtime that was budgeted last year, even though we had a very severe winter. Since the previous budget was, or document was presented where it wasn't balanced, we've also identified that health insurance premiums would decrease $175,000 from what we had in the other budget, or the other document. The CHIPS funding, which is road-related funding, that would be included in the budget. Special revenue funds for our water, sewer, refuse are balanced and there's no need for rate increases. Solid Waste and Power Utilities, they're enterprise funds, they operate on a cash-flow basis, so they're gonna show deficits, but those are offset depreciation and amortization, non-cash expenses. In the personnel area, proposing to add a keyboard specialist for the codes department to allow the counter to be open five days a week. We heard that as a desire of members of council. Reestablish the position of assistant police chief, Chief Nagel mentioned this. He would mitigate the impact of that through adjustments to department staffing. Restore a full-time secretary in my office. Provide contractual step increases in longevity pay for all represented employees that are currently under contract. And then provide a step increase in longevity payment for non-represented management employees who are eligible for that, and not all of them are, and a simple longevity payment for those who have reached the top of their pay range. Can you give us cost to those five or six, five, 245 proposals that are in there? There's nothing in there for cost-wise, especially, I'd like to see the step increase in longevity payment for the non-represented management employees. I would assume that's your senior- Right. -staff. So I know there's a lot to look at here and you just got this, so as I said, we'll plan a more lengthy discussion with you at the work session next week and through the next six weeks or so, hopefully refine this to something that the council will vote on and we'll get it approved. Just one last question. Doug, have you, you got included in $1.1 million in debt stabilization reserve, offset by a transfer from capital of $1.3 million? Right. Laura, do you want to discuss that? Is that the rate of return on the, is that your rate of return increase? No?
No, what that is, is there's been old money from bonds and whatnot in the Capital General Fund. And what we're suggesting is moving that money back to general because the debt has already been paid down.
The debt's exhausted? It's been paid completely off?
Mm-hmm. Not completely off, but it's been paid past, much past, except for one, which is why those two numbers don't match. It's been paid past the point of the unexpended proceeds, so they've been released. And I'm suggesting that that go into a debt stabilization fund and not just to balance the operating budget.
And what bond, do you know what bonds they were for what projects at all?
Yeah.
Could you get them for us, please?
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't understand why they weren't paid towards the original bond payment. Were they left-
Well, the original bond payment was paid out of the general fund, that money just was never transferred back, so it should have gone against-
Should have gone against the bond payment, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I have one other item-
Please.
I may. It looks like the county's able to firm up May 14 as a meeting, joint meeting date. And Counsel Cuddy, I tried to get it earlier because of travel times for legislators there suggesting 6 o'clock would be the earliest they could start. And I know-
I can, I have a ceremony, National Technical Honors, or actually, no, it's, yes, National Technical Honors Society, at Huganda Gobosis, is at 7:00. So I can be there for the first part of the meeting.
Okay.
But I will have to be excused about quarter of 7:00, so I can be there for my students.
Counsel, from what I understood from the emails, going back and forth, I don't believe it's gonna be 100% from the county's, 100%-
I do want to be there.
I understand that, but I don't think you'll be the only one that's not in attendance.
Yeah, with that larger group, it's hard to avoid conflicts.
Absolutely. What's that, boss?
That's it.
Counsel McCormick, you were first.
Just thinking, when we passed the resolution for the deputy clerk at the correctional facility, I was thinking back over the 12 years and I was wondering if the mayor or the city manager would mind, or the city clerk, sending a letter of thanks to Mike Pettigras for the time that he did come here and do what he did. He was, he was a great support, because just, he was always there to call on when we needed help and he was a, just a good person. And the little history note, his dad was corporation counsel way back when, and I brought him in and I think there's a plaque over there with Mr. Pettigras's, yeah, to him, he didn't even know it. So it was just another small part of being in, wonderful part of being in a small town. But he was great to work with and I'd like the city to do that for him.
It'll be taken care of.
Thank you.
Anything else on your other business, Counsel?
Your war is silent.
I'm sorry?
Your war is silent.
You'll have to thank the gentleman to my left, so.
It's still early.
Still early, yeah, relatively.
It's only 9:00.
Is there a request for executive session?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to update counsel on collective bargaining issue.
And I'd also like to add a personnel issue. At this point, I'll entertain a motion for executive session. Counsel McCormick, seconded by Counsel Camardo. If you would call the roll, please.
Counsel McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Azika?
Yes.
Aye, we'll be in recess for executive session.